I'm going to call the Village Board of Oregon meeting to order for Monday, April 11th, 2022. Candy, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Fashion.
Here.
Bealow.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lunch.
Here.
And Stitch is absent.
Okay.
Randy? Is this a good time? I was just going to ask that we move an agenda item up.
10B?
Yes, 10B.
Yep.
Up to after 4C.
Well, we'll move that to right after public comment.
Right, just so that all the discussion about the 249 North Main.
Got it.
Properties together.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, so let's go to three, which is approval of the March 21st, 2022 Village Board Meeting Minutes. I'll take a motion in a second to approve those.
So moved.
Okay, I saw Carleen and Derek. Any discussion, any corrections? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public appearances, first, we're going to have the chief do a little swearing in, oath of office swearing in of police officer Jeremy Hatfield to the sergeant position. Chief?
Do you have a microphone for swearing in?
Um, the one on the back on the table. Yeah, right. Okay. Yeah, first, I'd like to thank you for your time. This is a big deal for us. Our first line supervisors are incredibly important to our officers being successful and mentored and just guided through their careers. So filling these positions, we do not take lightly. We work really hard to find the right person. Jeremy Hatfield, which I believe many of you may know him already, he's been with us since 2007. He's filled many positions. I would say one of the most important positions I feel he's filled is one as an instructor. I've been in law enforcement for 20-plus years now, and hands down, he's one of the best instructors I've ever met in the profession statewide. So we are very fortunate to have him. He's an instructor in, let me know if I missed anything here, professional communications, firearms, defense and arrest tactics, TASER.
Tactical response.
Tactical response, so he's our active shooter type scenario trainer. And then also, just recently, they only took a very select few from Dane County to become instructors in an active shooter scenario type training. It's a lot of tabletop exercises, it's called ASOM training. And without hesitation, I submitted Jeremy for that position because he's just phenomenal, and he truly represents this community in the best way in doing that. So we had two people apply for the position, two very qualified people. We went through the process, and Jeremy did an excellent job. And with this promotion, he will oversee second shift. Our 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM shift, it's some of our younger officers. It is hands down our busiest shift by far. We get very minor calls to very major calls, one right after the other. So it's just incredibly important to find that right person to be that supervisor. So Jeremy, congratulations. I know this has been a goal of yours for a very long time, and I'm very proud to be the one that gets to give you the stripes.
Perfect.
You've worked very hard for them, yes. So would you like to say anything before we do the swearing in?
I'm good.
All right, Jeremy, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeremy L. Hatfield.
I, Jeremy L. Hatfield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws and ordinances.
The Charter, laws and ordinances.
Of the Village of Oregon.
Of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as sergeant of the Oregon Police Department.
Of my office as sergeant of the Oregon Police Department.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Yeah, good job.
Congrats again, Jeremy.
Please staff wants to step outside with some pictures.
Okay, next, next up is 4B, presentation from resident Ray Vogler, and I think she has two other people with her, regarding the Sculpture Park at 249 North Main Street. Ray, if you all want to come up and tell us your name and your addresses for the record, please.
My name is Ray Vogler. I live at 299 North Main Street in Oregon, Wisconsin.
My name is Jill Corey Lippert. I live at 130 Ash Street in Oregon.
My name is Judy Kingsbury, and I live at 729 Meyer Avenue in Madison, Wisconsin. I'm a guest, thank you.
So before we get started, are people able to hear us? We all have masks on, we want to make sure that you're able to hear what we're saying. Is that okay?
Yep.
Great, okay, then we will start. So first, I wanted to thank you for having us here to speak before the board and the public about a proposed Sculpture Garden Park at 249 North Main Street. And we are speaking on behalf of a new organization that is called the Oregon Sculpture Garden Park Organization. And so we are representing that group not really as individuals, but as members. And that group actually has 140 endorsers now, including 40 businesses who are supporting this endeavor. So we're very excited about what we can do here and the fact that so many people have come on board. Thank you.
I'll just introduce myself. I'm Jill Corey Lippert, as I mentioned. I've been a resident of Oregon since May of 1998. I am a glass mosaic artist and a photographer. I'm sure you're shocked to know I'm the artist representative. I am a member of Southern Wisconsin Art Guild, Madison Art Guild, Wisconsin Alliance of Artists and Crafts People, and a former president of 14 South Artists.
I'm pleased to be here today, and I'm enthusiastic about the proposed Oregon Sculpture Garden Park. I have a background in horticulture and volunteer management, and have worked for more than 20 years at the UW Madison Arboretum. I volunteered at Friendship Center Camp in Dodgeville, doing environmental education with kids. I'm a member of the Wisconsin Volunteer Coordinators Association and the American Public Gardens Association. I have a passion for bringing together people and nature in positive ways, and I like to explore parks and other green spaces in Wisconsin and wherever I travel.
My name is Ray Vogler. I've lived in the district for 27 years in the village and also the town of Oregon. Those years have gone very quickly. I've just noticed that it's been that length of time. examples I wanted to give is that our plan was to reach out to business people and reach And we have raised our sons here, they went to the wonderful Oregon School District. I was on the school board, also very much a mom in the schools, doing a lot of the volunteering, out to individuals in Oregon to find out, is there really an interest in this park? working with books, kids, working with the various activities and parties, and just involved And we found that we knocked a lot of doors, we walked into businesses, and they love, in the community. I've been also doing a lot of other volunteer work in Oregon for the last two decades, and love the idea. The same thing for different churches, pastors are on board with this, organizations, individuals, most recently, I worked on the Oregon Library, the New Library fundraising, which was very and every single restaurant actually in downtown Oregon has signed on to endorse. wonderful and gratifying, and we raised quite a bit of money. And when groups endorse, they generally mean that they will help us down the road. And so right now, what I'm doing is volunteering, putting myself forward to keep the beautiful They've already offered donations, but we're saying, let's kind of not put the cart before green space in Oregon as public space. the horse, let's start with the organization, and then the money and the donations will So thank you. flow with time. Okay, so this park is something that we see as a combination of sculptures, native gardens, educational areas, creative kids play area, dedicated bike paths. So I want to explain those a little bit. And what we mean is, we see this as a holistic park right in downtown Oregon that will serve the entire community. It will not be a pocket park or a children's park, a child park or a neighborhood park. This will be a community park, one that every person in the community is able to utilize. And the sculptures will be something that we get from local artists, national artists, and others in the region. We will be getting native garden plants from various greenhouses, and we'll be utilizing the schools to help plant those plants. And we'll also have these areas with historical plaques so that we can use this as an educational area as well, for businesses, for groups, for classes, so we can learn more about art and learn more about nature. When it comes to creative play, we want this area to be very fun and colorful and creative artistic, because that is the focus of this park. And then the dedicated biking path will be one where you come in off of Main, and then you can drive through, leave on Johnson, and then be on your way. You can go off to the Keller Alpine Meadow area or off to the Rotary. And the nice thing now is that we have changed the bike lane on Main Street to be available, so it'll be very good in terms of access. And again, we see this vision as a community park for all. So why do we want to create this park? This park is like none other at all in Oregon, and we have wonderful parks here, and it's also unique within Dane County and beyond. So we believe that this park will be something that puts us on the map in the area, Dane County, Southern Wisconsin, and that it will create a destination for people who may want to come through, and also a destination for residents. So our vision is that people will want to stay around Oregon, they'll want to be here, they'll want to do their recreating and their enjoyment in Oregon, maybe not run up to Madison one day, stay in Oregon for a half a day with your family, and go on this sculpture tour. We see it as free public art, and that's very, very important. So regardless of class, regardless of race, regardless of religion, politics, age, everyone has access to free art. And we have been told by other places that have done this, that the free art in public has brought people together. So it's excellent because it transcends boundaries, and you find a lot of commonality between people you normally might not, because you're enjoying the art. And the last point here about why create it, it's not just the end result that matters, what also matters is the process to get there. So we're planning on involving the schools, students, artists, naturalists, all sorts of people, businesses, village government, including all of you up here, to help make this park happen. And by the way, that is the model that we have found when doing research in Red Wing, Minnesota, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, Stevens Point, they all worked in unison for a common goal of a beautiful park that marked the identity of their cities. So why here? Why do we want the park here at 249-267 Main Street? First of all, the location is beautiful. It's 2.7 acres, so it's a nice size. It's right in the middle of a historic neighborhood, right in downtown Oregon. So this will be a great advantage to Oregon as a downtown park. And the reason for that is, a lot of the sculpture tours and a lot of the activities that other places are generating that bring revenue into their communities are very specific to downtowns, and that's what this park is. It's also in a tax increment district, number five, which is already slated for revitalization, and parks do exactly that. And the population in this area is diverse, so we're able to pool people from various backgrounds to help the park go forward. And then we also know there have been a lot of failed attempts, to be honest, at 249 in the last decade and more, and a lot of that has to do with soil erosion, soil problems, drainage. A park is very minimal in terms of impact on land. The only building we would have would be a shelter, and that would be above ground, no basement. So it would be very advantageous to keep that land in a secure way. We would not be cutting into trees, digging up the land, and it would be a real boon for Oregon not to have a problem with that piece of land. And then the last thing I want to say about this is that it's already paid for. So that land was purchased by the village for the people, so the people, it's the people's part, and that community land should go forward for the people, and that was the vision of that land. So now that we're not having the library there, and that would have had different parks and some sculptures we had talked about, we can continue that wonderful tradition of public parks in Oregon, as are our public parks across America. And we need to think big, we need to act big, we need to have vision. And to do this may affect us for many, many generations to come, and in a really good way, it's a legacy, something we're passing down to our children and our grandchildren and their children. Okay, the economics of the Sculpture Park. As I said, it's already paid for, the taxpayers' money, and we need to think about what was the use of that park, that area, all these years. There had been the Methodist Church for about 150 years or so. It was actually built in 1862, 1863, and that was not on the tax rolls. It was going to be the library, and that would also have not been on the tax rolls. So just, we need to think in community. This is a community space, and it really needs to stay that way, because people have a sense of, what would I say, appreciation, appreciation for this land. The other thing is, it's a hard sell for construction, we know that, and the land itself is less in value than what we paid for it, so that's kind of a little bit of a problem. And given the recent reports with the library and all the site problems, anyone that would purchase that land would need to put a lot of money into it. So bottom line here is, making this into a park is actually advantageous to the taxpayers, less costly as a park, and we would not be asking for TIF money. This is a TIF-TID district, so it's very likely that any developer coming in here may ask for hundreds of thousands of dollars to build on that land. We are not asking for that, so it's a good deal. And Main Street. It needs to be on Main Street because that area is very, very visible. So think of it this way, if people are driving down Main Street, walking down Main Street, maybe they're just driving through town, if they see this park, that will generate interest, and we'll have more people coming to the park, more kids playing in the park, more people being involved in that, and maybe going downtown, and that'll be spoken about by Jill. And the easy access and a grand entrance off of Main Street would be vital to make that park a success. And the last thing is, there is an entire organization, as we're doing research, and I just want you to know, we're calling all over the country doing research about parks and how they do them, and sculpture gardens and tours, we're finding out that there is an incredible initiative called Main Street America, and we may be able to utilize funds from them and also direction, and the fact that we are right on Main Street, have this land that's available, it's really too hard to pass up. And this will strengthen our local economy. Okay, so our parks and sidewalks, what I want to talk about there very, very quickly, so we can get on to the next speaker, is that we can have it all. We've been hearing how there could be an initiative to have sculpture along the sidewalks in downtown Oregon. We totally support that, we think that's a fantastic idea. We're hearing that there may be a sculpture out at the New Library, wonderful idea, and that there may be sculptures even in other parks. So I think the best way to do this, and many people who have done this already, we've talked to, said yes, having a focal point, having a hub for the sculptures will advance all the sculptures. So we would see this park as the hub, people come in town, they rent a bike, possibly an e-bike, get on that bike, get a tour map, and they head all over town, spend a half a day here, and then that generates revenue for our economy, our local economy here, as people frequent various establishments, shops, restaurants, and so on. And that hub, that park, will make the entire tour a destination, and it will keep people here, and it will be worth the drive down, too, the fact that it's long enough, there's enough time, you're not just hopping in for five minutes, you're actually checking out all of the sculptures. Okay, so for the park operation, very simple, we see this as being a village government park, as are all parks in Oregon. We see it organized by the Friends Group, which is going really strong, and we will take on the operation of the work, the fundraising, creating the gardens, creating the paths, helping to maintain, doing all the work that makes a park happen. And on the model of the Dane County Anderson Friends Park, that's pretty much how they organize, and so we will be working along those lines, and they have been mentoring us on how best to organize parks.
Now, I introduced myself as an artist, identified myself that way, but I actually started out as an accounting major. I ended up with a finance degree, and I worked in mortgage banking for years. I'm also the epitome of the frugal German. So believe me, I would not support this endeavor just because I'm an artist, unless I felt that in the long run, it would have more financial benefit for the community than just building housing on the site. Let me tell you a little story. Visitors come in to see the sculptures and gardens, they stay to have lunch at one of our many great restaurants, or maybe they'll decide to pick up the ingredients for a nice picnic from Bill's. After lunch, they'll stroll over to the Chocolate Caper to have a chocolatey dessert. After that, it's a stop at the Wine Reserve or the Main Street Tap for a beverage. As Ray mentioned, almost every restaurant in town has endorsed the park. Maybe they'll discover a great place to have a massage or get their hair styled. As they tour the downtown area to see the sculptures placed there, they will be drawn to investigate the shops, such as Peaceful Heart and Burgy Jewelry. On the way out of town, they'll stop for gas, then they notice the True Value, oh, there was that thing I meant to pick up. As they're leaving True Value, they see the display in the windows of the Oregon Hometown Pharmacy, and they go in and shop there. Once visitors discover our restaurants and shops, they'll want to return. This project can only help the businesses in Oregon. I believe the Sculpture Park and gardens have the potential to bring a significant amount of tourism dollars to the village. By placing it downtown rather than in some outlying area, we draw visitors to the heart of the village. Sculptures create a sense of place in the community. Visitors stop to take pictures with the sculpture located near a business, which might be themed to match the business. The visitor posts their business, I'm sorry, their photo on Facebook, which draws other visitors to the area. In the meantime, the first person is drawn to invite our many great restaurants, or maybe they'll decide to pick up the ingredients for a nice picnic from Bill's. After lunch, they'll stroll over to the Chocolate Caper to have a chocolatey dessert. After that, it's a stop at the Wine Reserve or the Main Street Tap for a beverage. As Ray mentioned, almost every restaurant in town has endorsed the park. Maybe they'll discover a great place to have a massage or get their hair styled. As they tour the downtown area to see the sculptures placed there, they will be drawn to investigate the shops, such as Peaceful Heart and Burgy Jewelry. On the way out of town, they'll stop for gas. Then they notice the True Value. Oh, there was that thing I meant to pick up. As they're leaving True Value, they see the display in the windows of the Oregon Hometown Pharmacy, and they go in and shop there. Once visitors discover our restaurants and shops, they'll want to return. This project can only help the businesses in Oregon. I believe the Sculpture Park and Gardens have the potential to bring a significant amount of tourism dollars to the village. By placing it downtown rather than in some outlying area, we draw visitors to the heart of the village. Sculptures create a sense of place in the community. Visitors stop to take pictures with the sculpture located near a business, which might be themed to match the business. The visitor posts their business, I'm sorry, their photo on Facebook, which draws other visitors to the area. In the meantime, the first person is drawn to investigate that business. Eau Claire residents rave about the sculptures. They've added to the quality of life in the city. The sculptures provide free art that is available to everyone regardless of language, economics, or the color of their skin. It's contributed to an active lifestyle, and it's raised property values in the city. They started small, with just six sculptures, then grew from there, as we will. It has grown each year, which testifies to their success. The Sculpture Park is the number one for clicks on their tourism website and is the number one for questions from tourists. It's also the number one subject for travel articles, not the breweries and the wineries. One of the things I like best about the Red Wing Sculpture Park is that two teachers and their high school students created a sculpture. Now, you might think, so what? A couple of art teachers and their classes got involved? That seems natural. But in this case, one was an art teacher, the other an auto mechanics teacher, so there was a melding of art and industry. Twenty twenty-one was the first year for their art walk. The holiday downtown stroll, the day after Thanksgiving in twenty twenty-one, generated five hundred thousand dollars in revenue spent on shopping and eating at businesses. It was the best year ever for their downtown businesses, and keep in mind, they're not that much bigger than Oregon. Stevens Point is a different model from Eau Claire, Red Wing, or our plan, as it is a park only. Children's art is included, which our park would also include. They intentionally go to the effort to seek out diverse groups to come together each year for a different project. The sculptures will be enhanced by the gardens, the gardens will be enhanced by the sculptures. The sculptures at the entrance will entice visitors into the park. Now, all of the art is going to be juried. The jury will be made up of artists, community members, students, and teachers. They will ensure that it is high caliber, quality materials, and that it can withstand our Wisconsin winters. That's an important issue. We'll have a variety of art. Multiple styles and media will be represented to, excuse me, represented to appeal to all tastes. The goal is to have inclusion and diversity of both artists and the art itself. It will be rotated to keep the art fresh and keep people coming. There will be permanent installations, those will be purchased from the artists, and an example might be a mosaic or a mural on the shelter wall. There will also be semi-permanent installations, those will be leased from the artists and rotated every one to three years. We'll also have temporary art. We definitely want art created by local art classes all the way from K to twelve. That will be shown for a short time period, or perhaps it'll even be biodegradable. We'll also have seasonal art. At least some of the art will be available for sale, and sculptures and art can be commissioned or sponsored by local businesses and residents. There are over twenty art groups in Dane County and two art groups loosely based in Oregon itself. We have plenty of local artists to see contributions from for this project. Funding will come from grants, businesses, and foundations.
Yep, that's good. Community members will play a big role in creating and maintaining this park. They'll realize many benefits from it, and they'll be able to share those benefits with other creatures. Already, service clubs and individuals take part in caring for their Oregon parks, partnering with the public work staff. This type of community engagement explains why Wisconsin ranks twelfth amongst all states for volunteerism among residents. There are many people and organizations in and around Oregon that could be sources of support, and many have endorsed this park already. There are opportunities to partner with youth. Oregon's Four-H Headliners Club, Oregon High School Ecos Club, FFA Chapter, Skills USA, and Interact Clubs are just a few examples of youth clubs that could do service projects in the park. Volunteers could come from civic organizations such as Rotary and Optimists, Area Master Gardeners and Master Naturalists, from faith groups and neighborhood associations, to name a few. Dane County Parks and the Friends Groups that partner with county park staff can be a resource and model for developing a successful partnership between the village and the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Park Garden. Public green spaces are beneficial to our physical and mental well-being. There are numerous examples across the country, from Hawaii to Florida, from Wyoming to Maine, and right here in the Midwest, of parks and park departments advancing physical health and mental health of their community, whether it's by passive enjoyment of green spaces or offering organized activities for community members. Parks serve as safe gathering spaces for seniors, families, youth groups, people of all ages. This is something many of us experienced during the worst of the pandemic when we shifted our gatherings outdoors to driveways, backyards, and parks. I celebrated Thanksgiving twenty twenty with my family at Cherokee Marsh Conservation Park. In good times, people come together in green spaces to socialize, to learn, and attend their shared community treasures. This is an important opportunity to show pride in community. Public green spaces bring in visitors from near and far, tourists who want to explore unique features of new places. Preserving and enhancing green spaces is farsighted, fiscally responsible, and benefits current and future generations. Green spaces also are vital infrastructure. They preserve open space that can absorb storm water and so reduce flooding problems. They also provide a cooling tree canopy and thus provide a shady, comfortable space where people can gather safely. People aren't the only ones to benefit from green spaces. Our wildlife neighbors benefit also. Green spaces provide crucial habitat for food, crucial habitat for birds, butterflies, and other creatures. This is very important, given the serious declines in songbirds, monarch butterflies, bumblebees, and other pollinators over the past few decades. The Oregon Sculpture Garden Park can include a variety of beautiful gardens for hummingbirds, for songbirds, for butterflies, there can be rain gardens. The two point seven acre site with a mix of sun and shade offers the opportunity to artistically paint the landscape with a diversity of gardens incorporating native and ornamental plants that offer nectar, pollen, and seeds for pollinators and other creatures. Incorporating a lot of native plants, which evolved in this area over millennia, results in gardens that are hardy and can thrive without a lot of fuss. Once established, they'd rarely need watering, and there'd be no need to use pesticides. They support the pollinators, which all of us depend on, for one out of every three bites of food, and it also enhances the distinctiveness and local character of this park. Working together outdoors to create and maintain the park will foster well-being, community cohesion, and a sense of ownership. There will be an array of opportunities for people of different ages and abilities to work together on the Oregon Sculpture Garden Park. There'll be opportunities for artists, woodworkers, gardeners, teachers, painters, students, families, seniors, village trustees, and anyone else to build and maintain this park and have fun while doing it. Creating the park will definitely take investments of time, money, and materials. Fortunately, there's a great deal of support for the park in the community, and there are many grants available from local, state, and national organizations that can fund creation and maintenance. Some of the grants that are available to help with aspects of creating the park include grants to establish monarch waste stations, for green space preservation from the Dane County Environmental Council, from the Wisconsin DNR for urban green space preservation and enhancement, and from the National Announcement for the Arts for creative placemaking through community art projects. These are just a few examples of many possibilities. And additionally, many local businesses, including garden and nursery businesses, support this park and would be likely to donate some materials needed to create gardens and other features. Opportunities for community involvement abound.
The educational potential is there for students of... The educational potential is there for students of all ages. Science and biology classes can come, study the plants, learn about native plants and the benefits to the environment and to local wildlife. They can learn about gardening and landscaping that addresses water issues on the land. They can learn about ecologically sound and sustainable gardening. Art classes, unnatural, they're going to be inspired, they're going to learn about different styles of art, they'll learn about art installations, they may talk about just what it takes to create each sculpture. Perhaps they'll spend time making sketches or taking photographs of the plantings or sculptures. Even better, they'll help us create a piece of art for the park. Math classes, you think, why would a math class go to the park? They can learn about patterns and numbers as they occur in nature and in art. They can learn about the balance in art. How about the mechanics of actually displaying the art? Steam classes, we already spoke about the piece created by the art teacher and the auto mechanics teacher. For adults, they can learn about gardening, art appreciation, and perhaps there'll be nature talks.
So what we are recommending today is that this is an informational presentation, and that was our understanding when we talked to staff in the village, that we would bring this forward as something for us to ponder and think about, and that this would be not actually voted on or a major decision made today. And the reason for that is we really have an opportunity here to do some exploration and find out more about, you know, some of the parks that are successes, look into that, but to vote at this point for a request for a proposal, an RFP, I think it's putting the cart before the horse, to be honest, because we have not had time to explore the various options. We need our due diligence. And there are a number of questions out there that are important, and I wanted to address two that have come up, and we want to take this job, by the way, that we're embarking on very, very seriously, and I just want people to know that I am retiring very soon, and I am willing to spearhead this, to take this on, is like my life's work to make this park. I'm a real passionate believer in it, and I think other people are as well, and we have a firm group of people that are dedicated, that are skilled, and can make it happen. So it will be a success. We know that it will be successful. And so the couple issues that have come up quickly about parking. Number one, there is really no parking requirement for parks. If there was a house on that, or maybe a housing unit, for example, let's say a thirty-unit apartment, that would need forty-five parking spots, right? So we don't have to worry about that with the park, although we may have a small parking area, it makes sense, and we do know that, for example, Keller Alpine has a small parking lot, Lerner does not, but there are parking spots across the street, too, at the school. So that is not a really large issue, it's something we can work with. And the other thing is about being ADA accessible, in other words, the American Disabilities Act, and we have already been thinking the plan of how to have walkways along that hill. So we would not have, for example, a hill and then you go straight down the hill with the walk. We would have it meandering back and forth, back and forth, so that you could really have it in a way where it's straight with the land, and that would make it more interesting. That was always our plan anyways, because people can then meander and have more coverage of the trees, the plants, the walkway. So we know this can work, and we're very, very sure that it's a great asset to the community, and that we hope you join us in this effort. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Any comments or anything to presenters from the village board? Yep, Amanda?
Yeah. The one thing I would say might need a little work here is you mentioned having a grand entrance onto North Main for traffic and stuff. I would recommend putting the entrance more on Johnson Street, probably, although having visibility from North Main is a good idea, and bike access and walking and all that, but, you know, if you do it on North Main, we had some issues with putting the library there, we were going to have to put in a stoplight, and if you want to avoid those kind of expenses, you know, and maybe it wouldn't get as much traffic necessarily as a library, so maybe Johnson Street would be the better entrance and exit if you were going to put a lot. That was all.
Jerry?
Yeah, I heard a statement twice, and a very nice presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
I liked it.
Thank you.
But I heard a statement, and it was mentioned twice, that that site is all paid for. Lisa, you're the finance director. Number one, I think we paid about nine hundred thousand for that, didn't we?
Yeah, the, when we purchased the lot, it was eight hundred ninety thousand dollars, and it was purchased in two thousand seventeen, and the debt service on that is a twenty-year debt service. So not including this year, there's still about six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars left of debt service on that lot.
So it's not paid for?
No.
Okay. And how many years are still...
There's sixteen years left, not including this year.
Okay, so correct your presentations going forward, please, because we still, the taxpayers of the village still owe about seven hundred thousand dollars on that. Jeff, I have a question for you. Vandalism. Who's going to maintain...
We're against it.
Yeah. So am I.
Yeah.
Who, your staff would have to maintain that, right?
Yeah, I'd be, we, as we maintain parks and, yes.
And the reason I ask is I remember UW, they put out their buckies every year, up and down State Street and all over campus, and last time I checked, they had a staff of six people all summer long, all the, the whole time those statues are out, those buckies are out, and they do nothing all day but clean the graffiti off of them. And I'm picturing probably a need of that type for these sculptures. And Elise, I don't want to leave you out. The history of that lot is it was purchased from the Methodist Church.
Jerry, maybe we should hold off. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna address that in ten B, so can we hold off of your questions? Is that okay?
You're in charge.
Yeah, please, yeah. Elise will sort of address it. I do want to make one point, because I know there's been, I've gotten a couple emails, and there's some confusion between the Sculpture Park. I just want people to know that the village did write a grant, I wrote the grant, for a hundred thousand dollars, and we got the grant for the sculptures to be placed all around the village. So I just want people to understand that, because some people are confused on which is which, so we did get, we did get approved, we do have that hundred thousand dollars, and we're moving forward to do that, so, and that would be all over the village, so. Anybody else from, yeah, Curly?
So I really like this idea, and I like it for a variety of reasons. As a former middle school teacher who did a lot of gardening with art, I appreciate the opportunities for collaboration between schools and kids of all ages, and having the possibility of constructing art that would be there on a temporary basis. My granddaughter in particular really likes to make art out of things she finds. She was at my house yesterday, finding lots of sticks that she was making art with, and I just think it offers an incredible opportunity for collaboration and community across age, race, gender, all of those things, and I applaud all the work that you've put into this, especially the research to find out what it's like in other places, because that is, you know, that, I think one of the things that we've learned is sometimes we have, as you said, put the cart before the horse, and really thinking this through is a very important thing, so I applaud your efforts and thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And one thing we did want to add is we think it'd be excellent if every trustee walked the land before any decision is made, because when you walk that land, it gives you a sense of what you're really looking at, the topography, the... Because when you walk that land, it gives you a sense of what you're really looking at, the topography, the trees, the formation of it. You know, it's a very unique lot, so I think people will have a better sense when making any decisions or vote. Thank you for listening, and we'll listen to the rest.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. Okay, we will move to foresee which is public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Each person will have three minutes. I know there's folks for a couple, couple items, so this is the time that we'll take the public comment. Who would like to start? You want to come up, sir? Just tell us your name and your address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Barone. My wife, Colleen, and I are twenty-five-year residents of the village here. We've raised our family here. My wife is part of the school district. I am here as one of the voices of pickleball. Many of the people that are behind us right now, or behind me, are part of the pickleball organization. My understanding is that tonight, there will be a motion on the floor, after I've read through the information that was online, to move forward with the park project without pickleball. And what I'd like to do in roughly this three minutes is give another side of the equation that hopefully you will consider as we move forward. Pickleball in this village started in two thousand and fifteen, when my wife, Colleen, and I, Nancy and Roger Johnson, Tom and Sally Miller, and Jerome De'Ann Klein, actually approached the board, the park board and the village board, with the idea of moving pickleball into the village. For those of you that were around and on the board at the time, our proposal was that we would pay for the material and the labor if you would allow us to paint the pickleball courts, the Oak Street Courts with pickleball court stripes on there. The decision was made to move forward. If you fast forward to today, seven years later, you will see, any of you that have come by the pickleball courts, you will see a tremendous growth in pickleball. It is crazy how many people come out, families, kids, and, and adults. Randy had the pleasure last year, or I had the pleasure of talking with Randy, he wandered by on, I think it was a Tuesday night, and for about an hour. And he was watching everything that was going on. I tried to get him on the courts, he wouldn't do it. But he was able to ask a lot of questions.
I didn't have the right shoes on.
Yeah, that's always the excuse. But he was able to see that all the courts were full, and that we had ten, twelve, fourteen people that were waiting to play. Pickleball is a, is a tremendous opportunity for many, many people. It invests in our community for a lot of the same reasons that the ladies were talking about with the Sculpture Garden. We have people that come into the community and come out of the community and stop at our, our local stores. I played with a group of guys on a Wednesday night. After we're done playing, where do we end up? Main tap. And I'm not the only one. There's groups of ladies that play, and they end up at, at various restaurants around the area. Not only does pickleball invest in, in our community, but I, I think it's a, it's a necessary thing. One of the things with the park project is that it is really around the youth sports of, of our community. And absolutely it should be, and there's nothing wrong with that. But when do we invest in adult sports? When do we invest in adult physical activity, physical fitness? Pickleball is one of those areas that people do, and they, they jump in and they are hooked for life. When you look at pickleball and you look at the, the amount of players that are out there, there are four point eight million players that play pickleball now. That's a growth rate of thirty-nine percent over two years. This information comes from the Sports and Fitness Industry Association. This is the two thousand and twenty-two top-line information. Pickleball is, kind of has this perception that it's a senior game. It's, it's an old folks game. Nothing could be farther from the truth. When you look at it, the breakdown from ages six to seventeen, that's twenty percent of the four point eight million players. Eighteen to thirty-four years old is twenty-seven point eight percent. That's just under half of the population of the two point eight million people that are playing pickleball. The thirty-five to fifty-four group is twenty-one percent, the fifty-five to sixty-four group is twelve point six, and the over sixty-five, which I'm part of, is eighteen point four percent. It's a healthy, wonderful sport that anybody can get into. The, there is also, with the financial impact, it's tough to quantify that. Maybe Judy could do a better job of that. But when you look at, when you have permanent courts in your community, what it does for the community, and it allows you to bring in league play, it allows you to bring in tournaments. I can just envision this going forward, part of Summer Fest. When we're having our other tournaments too, this could be very well part of Summer Fest, that's going to bring people into the community. When we have youth sports tournaments, and mom and dad are bringing their kids in, they can now play pickleball. They can be out there while in between games and spending money in our community. When you look at the communities around us, if you looked at a clock around Madison, and starting with Oregon, and you looked at all the public courts that are out there, that are permanent pickleball public courts. Fitchburg just opened up eight courts last year. Verona opened up four last year. Cross Plains is building courts right now as we speak. Mount Horeb is building courts. Middleton has eight courts. Sauk Prairie, with Culvers up there, is building a whole sports park. Wannakee just built eight courts. Windsor de Forest has four. Deerfield has a couple. Monona has four. McFarland is building new courts this year. Stoughton has six. Oregon, right now, is not in the plan. We have a, we have the Oak Street Courts, but we all know that we have a problem out there with maintenance. Talking with Jeff, as I've frequently done over the last three months, I know the idea is to maybe get a grant and chew up that asphalt and try to put down some new courts that'll be dual-use. Wonderful to have that, but at the end of the day, it's still not the right location. It's still not near restrooms, and they're not permanent courts, which I truly believe, this community believes, that we need to have.
All right. Mike, can you finish up?
Yep, yep, I, I will right now.
Thank you.
I want to talk one quick thing about fundraising, because there's this perception that's out there, and in the early days, it was true that the pickleball community was supposed to fundraise two hundred thousand dollars. Randy, you'll remember yourself, you got involved with leading the fundraising activities. And at the time, when you were involved with all the sports committees, the, the decision was made that all the committees as a whole had to raise five hundred thousand dollars. No one sports committee, or no one sports group was responsible for any amount of money. It was all supposed to be together. So in, in closing, I would ask a couple of things. One is Resolution nineteen thirty-one, which was adopted in November eighteenth of two thousand and nineteen. That's when Jeannie was still here. That was adding pickleball to the park project, twelve lighted pickleball courts. We have since pared that down because it cost us six, six lighted pickleball courts. I believe that the, that this is the right way to go. The state of Washington just recently made pickleball the official sport of the state of Washington. This is National Pickleball Month. The, the park board, another, another interesting point is that, I, I do need to get this on record and say this, is that the, the park board meeting that I attended in December with Jerome Klein, one of the final items that was on the park board meeting minutes was that the staff will come back to the park board after the pricing and the alternatives have taken place. And the park board was supposed to weigh in on it. I know the park board is tomorrow, and there's a motion today to go forward. One of the things, as a citizen, not even as a pickleballer, as a citizen, I wonder what good the park board does if they're not involved with the, the biggest park project that this village has ever seen. So in, in closing, I would ask that the, you know, the financials, if my math is correct, is, with contingency for Contract A and B, is three hundred, three point seven five million dollars. The village was going to borrow three point five, the, the various community organizations were supposed to raise five, raise five hundred thousand. I do understand that it's not with the concession stand in there, which was Contract C, and that's a whole nother discussion, I think, that has to take place. But we know, based on the bids that came back, that we can build pickleball courts for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars without electrical. I would ask the board to consider adding that into Contract A, the hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, so we can at least get the courts built this year. And keep, keep bringing people into our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Jeff, we'll keep.
I'll comment later.
Comment later when we get to JC. Okay, so let's, let's get through the, the public comment, sir. Come on up, tell us your name. Keep it to three minutes, if you can, please. Thank you.
I should be able to.
All right.
My name's Steve Ferrin. I live at twenty-six oh one Highway MM in Fitchburg. I've been a resident of this school area for forty years. I taught at the University of Wisconsin in the art department for thirty years, and I've been doing public art since nineteen eighty. I was asked to come and talk about some of the projects that I've been involved with, and some of them have been. One of the ones that's a local project is the River Walk in Milwaukee. And I was there thirty years ago with installations, and I have permanent installations in Milwaukee on the River Walk. I have public art all over the United States. One of the things that, when, when Milwaukee started the public art, the River Walk project, Milwaukee's River Walk was not very accessible. It was not very popular. At this point, it's one of the most popular destinations in, in the United States. The USA Today has just, did a poll, and it was one of the most active places. So I, I think it's, you know, I'm, I think the committee did such a great job of talking about all the things that, that it could bring to, to your city. And, and I, I do think it's all true, what they're, what they're talking about. Things like vandalism and things like that, these are the realities of, of everything, of everything we put out these days. I would be on the advisory committee, and I think one of the things is that you, you, you get materials that are in public art. You, you try to find materials that will not be destroyed by vandalism. As a young person, I think when I was growing up, I was perhaps more of a troubled youth. I thought seeing art was more beneficial. It showed me a different way of viewing things, perhaps than I was, than I was used to, and it showed me a way of thinking that was different. So these are things that are not, I, I don't think you can quantify them in terms of economics all the time. Of course, that's part of your job, a big part. But I, but I do think it's an important thing to realize for the youth as, as well as everybody else, the value that art inherently has. Up and above the economics, which is substantial, I believe. So I don't, I don't know if there's anything that I could offer other than that. If you have any questions for me, as, as the artist, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think we're good.
All right.
Your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes?
Good evening. I am Dan Dick, three sixty-two North Bergermont Boulevard, and I currently serve as the pastor at the United Methodist Church. And want to speak in favor of the Sculpture Garden. Our church had a long history, a hundred and thirty-nine years on the, on the property that's under discussion. And just want to say, on behalf of, of our community of faith, how delighted we would be for this to be a community center, a gathering place, something that could give the Oregon community a true identity that stretches far and wide. Some of the priorities of, of our church today, our, our environmental stewardship and the preservation of the old-growth trees would be incredibly important. Lifelong learning, and especially the opportunity to do some intergenerational and multi-generational kinds of learning are, are priorities. Health and wellness, and the bike path and the walking, we, we completely support that. And just at a time in our culture where it is so easy to get focused in on the negative, we're looking for ways that we can engage in the community that focus on the good and the beautiful and the true. And this feels like something that could be a true celebration for the entire community. And so I just come on behalf of a church that has had a long history with this property and this community to say that we would fully support and think it's a wonderful idea. In the midst and in the face of all the challenges, this feels like the, the potential good far outweighs the, the costs. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Andy?
Sorry, I'll be quick. I know you have a long board meeting, and I do too, so I got to get to it. So Andy Wilden, seven six three Ridgeview Lane, wanted to just speak in, in favor of the pickleball courts and reconsidering maybe accepting that. As Mike said, if we could at least get the courts built, I think that would be good. And I want to attack it at a different, a different direction a little bit. And that's, I was thinking about Jennifer and building a library, and being part of those meetings, when we were trying to figure out what the library was going to do, and part of it was building community. And I think that's something that we really need to think about these days, trying to figure out how we can get different people together in a positive way. And I can attest that we have about sixty people that have been getting together all winter, twice a week, to play pickleball. That's an average. Sometimes we have over seven or eighty people. And pickleball is a sport that allows you to intermix with different people, with different abilities, different ages. I could play with a seventeen-year-old one game, and the next minute, I'm playing with an eighty-year-old. And it's a tremendous amount of fun. It's all positive. And I really think that, as Mike said, we need to invest in kind of a, a group of people that maybe haven't had, have been a little underserved in our community. Unless you're a softball player who enjoys doing that, and, and, you know, age is a little bit limited there at times. This is a really, truly diverse sport that allows different people to get together, have a good time. And I think after coming out of the pandemic, that's something that we really need. So I'll cut it short.
All right. Andy, thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Jana Malden. I live at one hundred Marcy Drive in Brooklyn, Wisconsin. My former name is Hicks. I am proud daughter of David and Shelley Hicks. My mother was a staple at the Oregon High School for more than twenty years. As a graduate of Oregon High School myself, when I became a mother and I had children, I knew this was the community I wanted to bring them home to, to be raised in. So I had the privilege of growing up on the corner of Oak and Park, right across from what now is the youth center. And JC Park was my home. Like, I lived in that park, right? I walked to that park, I rode my bike to that park. I played with my friends in that park. I played T-ball and softball and soccer and all the things. And then when I came back to this community with my family, I was a mom in that park, right? I was a mom with the soccer and the softball and the T-ball and all the things, and it's phenomenal. I get a little emotional about this, and I'm here tonight to talk about pickleball, because my husband doesn't get to be here. My husband wanted to be here desperately. If you don't know him, his name is Billy Malden. He's kind of what a lot of people call the deaf guy, just going to say it. He proudly wears that title as well. Billy is currently teaching American Sign Language classes at Blackhawk Tech tonight, which is why he couldn't be here this evening. But he asked me to come and speak to you about this. So Oregon is my home, and we moved here to raise our children, to make this our home. But it isn't a place for Billy yet, until last year. Last year, Billy started playing pickleball, and he fell in love with the sport. But not only because it was a sport that he could play as an adult and stay active and bring his children to play with him, because the community embraced him. This community of pickleball people welcomed him in a way that was inclusive to him that he's never felt before. Pickleball became the way for Billy to call Oregon home. It's kind of ridiculous that I'm this emotional about it, but it means so much to my family, that my husband now has friends that he texts with, and they get together and play pickleball here in our home. On Sunday, we had two deaf friends drive from Milwaukee to come play pickleball here, because they've gone to other communities to play pickleball and didn't feel welcomed. But here we do. Our deaf community members feel welcome, because a lot of these people. Our deaf community members feel welcome because a lot of these people have learned how to navigate numbers in American Sign Language, right? And give scores to one another. And just be a place that embraces diversity. So this community of people has embraced people that don't know what they're doing when they show up with a pickleball paddle, or people who play really, really well and everything in between. So I know there's only a few minutes to speak, and I know that tonight you have a decision to make that I don't envy because that park is a beautiful space that is my home. And I, I really do value your thoughts into all of the plans for that park. Thank you for that in advance. I'm asking you tonight that you consider each proposal carefully and don't think that pickleball is just an old-person sport, but know that pickleball is what has made Oregon home for my whole family. So don't leave us out of the plan for Oregon, please.
All right, thank you very much. All right, who's up next? Yes, Susan.
Actually, I'm going to begin by reading a letter that was, it didn't get to the board in time, and Carol Bloom wrote the letter. She lives at two ninety-one North Main Street, but she had to leave town. So she said, could I come and read this letter? It's a short letter. Is that okay?
Yep, you have three minutes, Susan.
Fourteen years ago, the village board used tax money to upgrade the downtown area. At that time, the majority of the village board members had businesses that benefited from those improvements. Oregon residents have been asked to support increased costs of the expense of sewer improvements for the benefit of having a golf course and the surrounding home, home development. The neighborhood around the former Methodist church property has been subjected to a roller coaster ride over the past years due to unrealistic development proposals that are out of line with the size of the property, but also ignore the intrinsic value of the green space and the iconic oak trees. It is critical now to consider and support making this property a park that will benefit the whole community. The concept of a sculpture park has already been presented. There could also be use of community gardens in that space. Last but not least are the iconic oak trees on the property that are a treasure. Other communities celebrate their iconic trees by naming them and registering them on a database of the Native Tree Society. It has well, it has been well documented that there are health benefits from just observing a tree or walking through a green space. Recent research shows that trees capture more carbon after a hundred to a hundred and fifty years of age than they do in the first fifty years of growth. The trees on this property have been estimated to be two hundred to two hundred and fifty years old, and they are healthy. According to the Wisconsin DNR, oak trees support more than five hundred and thirty species of butterflies, moths, caterpillars, and they provide shelter and food for birds. Maybe the owners of surrounding properties understand and appreciate what really could be of greatest value and benefit to the entire Oregon community. Maybe it's time to listen to those who know the neighborhood best, that is, to keep the property a green space, which, if lost, if lost to development, can never be replaced.
All right, Susan, we're up at three. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, come on up, ma'am. Please tell us your name and your address, please.
Alice Farrell, two ninety Marcus Street, Oregon. I'm on the corner of Marcus and Johnson. And I guess my main concern, I'm, I shouldn't say this. I'm kind of grateful we've had a drought. And that because otherwise, all the water from that church lot starts down in my neighbors, two doors down, and eventually will get up to my place and into my basement. And, and I'm concerned about what they're gonna, no matter what they put there, my concern is, what are they gonna do about the water problem?
Okay.
And that. We've had, I mean, we've spent thousands of dollars for pumps and have some pumps put in our basement down. My husband has a regular pump that he'll take out there and put in one of them holes out there and just get the water to get away from our house. And we lived there for many years. We've lived here since eighty-four, many years, and never had a water problem. And I don't know what changed as to what made it so we have this water problem.
Okay.
And that, so that's, that's one of my biggest concerns. And I think if you put more blacktop there, it's gonna create more problems too, for us. And for the other neighbors. The other neighbors have just as much problems. I've had a neighbor next door knock on my door after a bad storm. Can we borrow your pump? Our basement's full of water, up to the steps, so. So that, it's a big concern. And my husband's not well, so I can't, you know, he cannot go out there and do that anymore, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna, do I see? Oh, yep, come on up.
Hi.
Name and address, please.
Stephanie Powers.
Mm-hmm.
I live at four thirteen Janesville Street in Oregon. I'm not used to speaking, but in those cottages on the Hallelujah Camp, I lived in one of them when I was a year old. And those statues mean a lot to me. But I can't see putting them here and there. I'd like to see them all together in one park. And I can relate to her with the water. I have the same thing happening at my house. And so by having this park, it would take care of a lot of that water where she lives, with the flowers and shrubs and the trees.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that up. And my grandpa also was an ordained minister, and he spoke in the tabernacle down there. And when he could fill in for the other priest, or not priest, but minister. And they had a huge tabernacle that was cherry wood. And every time you opened the door, you could just smell that.
Okay.
And then I even went down after we moved, and I was in grade school, and I'd go play with them when they came to Bible camp. They used to have dorms and a dining room upstairs where they would come every summer for a couple weeks. But I feel that I wanted to save those statues.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to see one cottage left if we could.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. One more. We'll take it.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kirosek. I live at three forty Veldor Street. I came because I heard about the pickleball discussion tonight. I used to play pickleball. It was wonderful. I stopped, now I'm like a physical mess. So I cannot wait to get back when my life calms down a little bit. I've introduced a friend and sister-in-law. She plays regularly, loves it. I recognize a lot of people back here. I was so excited to hear years ago that they were gonna put in these courts and was just very surprised that that's kind of up for discussion. So because I recognize people from back here, I'm just wondering if you guys, like, who's in favor of keeping the pickleball courts in the park? By a show of hands? All right, so I just wanted you to know who all was here for that, so.
We'll, we'll have a discussion. Yeah, thank you. All right, anybody else? Otherwise, we're gonna move on, okay? So we're gonna move on, we're gonna, we've moved ten B, which is the review status and future of twenty-two forty-nine, two sixty-seven North Main Street properties and determine the next steps. And so I think I'm gonna turn it over to Elise Cruz, who's gonna talk about the memo that we had in our packet.
Thanks, Randy. And just have to give a shout out to our administrator, Martin Chinks, who wasn't able to be here tonight. He, of course, you can tell, a Martin memo, when you see one, you've seen them all. He did a really great job summarizing, so a lot of this work is his. So just wanted to thank him for putting that together. But I'll go through a little bit of the history of the site, Jerry. You were starting to ask about that. Some of the references to this site and different plans that the village has, and then our recommendation, I think, providing some clarification on what we're requesting from the board tonight. I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding there. So I just want to get everybody on the same page. But the site we're referring to here is the site we had been considering for quite a while on the library project, about two point seven, two point eight acres in size. It was the former Methodist church site there since the early eighteen sixties. As the Methodist church moved out to the west side of the village, there was opportunity for redevelopment here of this site. Prior to the recession, there was a multifamily residential development that was senior-focused, that plans were started there. It seems that some approvals were obtained, but given the recession, a lot of that development ground to a halt, and it was put up for sale later. About ten years later, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, there was a sanctuary project that a lot of people might remember. That was another senior-focused assisted living facility. They had plans for a hundred and six units there. There was a lot of community conversations about that project, and ultimately, the approvals and entitlements did not, were not granted, and the property was again available for purchase. As Lisa mentioned before, the village had an opportunity around twenty sixteen to purchase the properties. We did purchase it at a cost of eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. There was an appraisal done prior to the first senior housing development, and that was six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at the time. So given inflation that happened between two thousand and three and two thousand and sixteen, the price we paid for it was about on par with what that appraisal would have been at the time. Mid-two thousand and seventeen, the site was conditionally selected for the future home of the library. Then MOU was written, fundraising continued, and then we all know where we ended up last year, where we determined that that was not the, the best site for the library anymore. Ultimately, the library is now gonna be out on Alpine Parkway. So we've done quite a few plans, again, that relate to this property. So just kind of reviewing where some of those, where this property is mentioned here. So there was a downtown master plan, two thousand and one, emphasized the importance of North Main Street acting as a gateway to downtown, having pedestrian connections to the downtown area. Our comprehensive plan, which is due for its next update through next year, but was adopted in two thousand and four, and then, again, updated in twenty fourteen. But this site has been designated for institutional, so the senior housing developments that are sort of, that were assisted living-type focus, and then library use, those are all the institutional uses that would be, kind of fall within that category that the comprehensive plan shows. So that also includes other public buildings, but not public outdoor spaces like parks. That's a different use in the comprehensive plan. That's called rural holding and conservation. And all of our parks have that designation, whether they're active parks or more passive parks. These properties are also listed within a community economic development area, which shows, again, the importance of that kind of main entrance corridor function that this site has, that residential development would be a good fit here, and that pedestrian connections, again, would be important. The zoning for the property, this would have been changed had the library moved forward here. Zoning is a lot more fluid and flexible than a comprehensive plan, but currently the zoning sits with what the rest of the block and the rest of the neighborhood shows, which is T.R. six, our two-family residential district, which is sort of a moderate density, a little bit more housing, of course, on that block than what we might see in more of a single-family neighborhood. We did have our civic campus plan, and this was mentioned a lot during the library conversations. Obviously, a lot of the assumptions during that time now are no longer relevant. Now we have village hall and library, having a new home. The youth center has found a home. But during this period of time, the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen window, it was looked at for various community facilities, including a possible senior center and the library. But, you know, land was purchased by the village with the intention of using it for a community building, not necessarily a park, but that was what the thought was at the time. Our parks plan also lines up with our comprehensive plan in its planning window, so we will also be doing an update to our Parks and Rec Plan through next year so that start of two thousand and twenty-four, we'll have that update completed. This area, just given the physical constraints of the railroad on the west side and then North Main Street to the east side, was sort of designated as a, an area where new parks were visioned to be difficult to fit in and hard to access. There are not parks currently within this neighborhood, and I'll get to this later, but I do think there's a role that green space can play in this site, and I think that's really important, that the neighborhood have something that's accessible and walkable to them. There have been challenges, obviously, with the three different developments and probably more developers that looked at the site and didn't formally pursue any opportunities here. The trees, there's a, just the configurations of the lot is such that you're essentially viewing everybody else's backyard, so there's no sort of, you know, back to the site. So creating any kind of use there is, is important to kind of take the context of, of being within a neighborhood and being respectful and, you know, a, a good fit, I guess, with the, the rest of the neighborhood. A lot of concerns, again, with water, topography of the site. The former development there left a lot of that land very compacted, so even though it's green space right now, a lot of that soil, given the driveways and parking lots and the buildings that even the Methodist church had there for a hundred and forty years, has left that site such that there are some of those water issues that need to be addressed regardless of whatever happens in the future here. So our parks plan has a lot of different levels of parks that are shown, and they're meant to serve kind of different populations in different geographic areas. So our largest parks are called our community parks. That would be something like J.C. Park or Keller Alpine Meadows. Highland and Netherwood Park, where there's large parking facilities, there's restrooms. They're meant to bring people in from outside to provide opportunities for tourism and tournaments and things that bring people in and don't serve just one neighborhood. We have our neighborhood parks, which most people should have within walking distance, but that's where a lot of our playgrounds, a lot of our soccer fields and playing fields are used for practices, baseball diamonds, things like that, that are, again, within neighborhoods. There's also a couple of these. We, we don't have too many of them, but something that's called a mini-park or a tot lot or a pocket park. And these are parks that fit really well within smaller spaces. They can have a specific use that might be directed towards children. It can be something that has kind of a unique feature, like a labyrinth or sculptures or seating areas. It can really be, you know, anything with community visions. But just to say that parks can take a lot of different forms and a lot of different sizes and functions within our community. We mentioned before, we are, these properties are within our TID number five, which has, the function of TID is to really drive reinvestment and redevelopment within areas that are considered, you know, blighted or underdeveloped. They can drive job creation and build the tax base, but all They can drive job creation and build the tax base, but ultimately, TID is there to help support development that wouldn't otherwise happen in those areas, given site conditions, given the cost of construction, a variety of reasons why people might be considering TID. So, that is one tool that the village has to consider with the future of the site. All right, so I'll just jump to our recommendations. So, there's been some conversation about not wanting to get the cart before the horse, not wanting to jump to conclusions. Obviously, we have some community members that have already, you know, started to formulate some ideas of what they think would be good use for the site. And I would just like to encourage the village board to consider that just because one proposal is brought forward doesn't mean that that's necessarily the only option for the site or the best option. It may end up being, we go through a process and find that there's a lot of community support, and a sculpture garden park might be the best use for that site. But I think we owe our community the opportunity to contribute their thoughts and opinions about the site, get folks out on the site to understand kind of the lay of the land out there and consider other opportunities. So, the first five points here, this is just from Martin and my perspective, what we feel like we would like to recommend for objectives for the board to consider. You don't necessarily have to agree with all of these, but then, the next three steps are sort of what we'll be asking the board to consider making a motion on tonight. So, our recommendations for the site would be to consider making the property available for private redevelopment through an RFP, request for proposal, process to generate interest and creativity, to see if there actually is interest from developers, given all the information we know about the site, all of the challenges, the listing price for the site, you know, putting that out there on the market to see if some developers are interested in putting forth a proposal for the site or community groups. Number two is ensure that a portion of the property is carved out of any redevelopment project to become at least a mini or pocket park, and, again, ensuring more broadly that green space is integrated as part of whatever comes forward for this property. Number three, ensure the proposed development is scaled and consistent with the uses and character of the neighborhood. I think that's why some of the senior-focused developments that had been brought forward in the past didn't gain support in the neighborhood and in the community is because they really felt out of scale and out of character with the, the size of the homes, the historic nature of the homes, and kind of that entrance that we have into our historic downtown. So, I think that's really important, that whatever ends up there feels like it's part of the neighborhood, even if it's new construction. Number four is provide for community and stakeholder input on the development of the RFP. And the RFP is, again, what we would be kind of putting out to the community, to developers, to say, here's what our community has agreed upon as what's important for the site. Now, show us your creative thinking on how you would make that happen. And five would be to encourage developers to consider senior and/or affordable housing in their proposals. We all know, we, I just did our affordable housing report a couple of months ago and shared that with you all. We know we have seniors in our community, we have families in our community that grew up here, that have lived here their whole lives and are moving out because they are literally getting priced out of their homes. There's not enough supply to keep up with demand. We have a very unhealthy vacancy rate, both for rentals and owner-occupied homes here in the area. We should be more about 5%, so that there's a nice mix of housing for people to select from of different sizes and locations and price points. And we're more at 2%, and so, people aren't finding something that they can afford or is a good fit for them and their point of life. So, as the village, we have few opportunities to really try to attract and direct what kind of housing we see. And I think I would be remiss in my role as the community development director to try to at least advocate for that and see if some kind of senior affordable housing might be a good component of the site. Not necessarily saying that it would take the entire site, but maybe there's a way for a mix of uses to coexist here and be an asset to the community, not just meeting needs for green space and art and community engagement, but also helping just, you know, work towards our housing goals that we've stated, and see if that maybe is an opportunity here on this site. So, to achieve these objectives, we are proposing the following process. We would be requesting the board to release this to Alex Vandewall, our planning consultant that's worked with the village for over 20 years, to prepare the proposal document and the process. The scope for Vandewall would include evaluation of the properties to develop key information for developers, so sort of the due diligence. A lot of that work has already been done with the library planning process, so geotechnical analysis, stormwater analysis, any other information that a developer or group taking on the property would need to know to really understand what the site could be used for. A public participation plan that would gather feedback from the community and relevant stakeholders to develop and refine the goals and preferred uses. So, that could start with, you know, organized site walk, probably have a series of community workshops and conversations, likely some surveys or other online options for people to provide feedback as well. And then, they would help us bring all of that information about the site and the data we've heard from the community together. And, you know, perhaps the, the writing on the wall would be, you know, we want to see this as a public use, and in which case, we could move in a different direction. If there's some interest in putting in an RFP to developers, then they would help us create a packet. And I think Martin included an example that Verona put together for a property on Verona Avenue that they recently sold, but sort of advertising the site, sharing information about Oregon, and then providing that list of goals and objectives and preferred uses for the site, and then, sort of, the criteria that the community would be using to kind of respond to whichever proposals came forward. So, that's what we're asking tonight. We're not saying that this should be senior housing, or this should be park, or any particular use, but just open to your thoughts and asking for your, our recommendation, again, would be to work with Vandewall, to just have them come back to a future meeting with a proposal that would outline that community engagement, due diligence process, and then ultimately, if the cards are pointing in that direction, to help us put together that RFP.
All right, so, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend a motion to get something on the table, and we can have plenty of discussion. But my, my motion is to approve and accept staff recommendations for 249-267 North Main Street as, as Elise has presented. And if we get a second, I'll, I'll sort of explain what I'm thinking.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jerry? So, I like art sculptures. Obviously, I wrote a grant to get some in the village, and we, and we got funded. We also have some private donations for a new sculpture at the corner park in Janesville Street. I think, for me, when I, when I, when it was determined the new library was not gonna be on North Main Street, I just assumed that we would sell, sell the lot and get it back on the tax rolls. But, but here's my biggest thing that I, that I struggle with, is that we paid $890,000 for that lot. We, we are up to 60% of our debt. That concerns me. That's a lot of debt. We're gonna borrow $10 million just for the library. We hardly have borrowed any of that yet. We have a new senior center on the horizon. We, we are finishing the remodel of the new village hall that we also bought. And we're talking about, tonight, we're gonna talk about the bids that come back for J.C. Park. And then, there's also been talking about the fire, a new fire station on the horizon. So, that's really sort of where I'm coming from, is that we're approaching, we're at that 60% debt, and that, that kind of worries me, and that we're not gonna get anything back for this. I think, I think a compromise can be, can be made, that we can get something back and still, and still do something nice for the, the village. I think we owe the, the residents and the taxpayers of the village to be responsible with our spending. I think our village residents look to us to make responsible financial decisions and make sure that we're putting the needs of the village first. So, I, I like the memo that Martin and Elise put together. And so, as I said, the biggest thing for me is, is the debt. And as Lisa has pointed out, we still have a lot, it's not paid for. So, I'm concerned about that. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Jerry?
Yeah, I'd just like to support what Randy indicated. And again, we're not making a decision on what is gonna be there. We're just gonna exercise due diligence and see what would work their best. And of course, one of those options could be a sculpture park, or maybe we can put sculptures in amongst whatever Vandewall recommends. So, I support Randy's motion.
So, Elise, one question I have for you is, the recommendations that are in our packet and that we have, I mean, wouldn't they be sort of the same when we decide what we're gonna do with this building? Kind of the same process?
Right, yeah, I mean, this is a really common process that, you know, communities use when they are trying to find a new use for the, for properties. Again, I would say that, yeah, just the, the first sort of, our recommendations and objectives may not be what ends up in the RFP. That's just given what we know about community conditions and the history of the site, that's what we would be recommending, but we're really open to hearing and seeing what a community engagement process looks like. I think we also need to do a little bit more focused work as we learn. There's more about that site than we didn't know before we kind of dove into it with the library. And so, we want to learn from those lessons and make sure that we really understand what would be a good fit there before kind of opening up Pandora's Box again. But I think we owe it to the community and the neighborhood to be more proactive with what comes forward. And we talked about kind of being barraged with a whole bunch of different proposals over the last, you know, 15 or 20 years. I'm sure that's been really exhausting for the community, so I want to make sure that whatever we move forward with, people feel like they were part of kind of helping paint the picture of what the future of the site looks like.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I think, I think what we're, we're doing here, just, just hold on one second. So, I think what we're doing here is we're, we're looking at a process. It's all, it may be a sculpture garden, it may not be. We're looking at a process. All right, Carly?
So, I definitely like the idea of a community process. I think that that is the way to have the most buy-in for whatever happens there, and I, I would certainly support that. I do have a question about TID and TIF and that, I mean, that, I find that incredibly confusing, even after the lessons that we've had in it, about how anything that goes there impacts, I, I'm, because I'm hearing a lot about putting things back on the tax rolls. My understanding is that there was only a very short window when that was on the tax roll, and then, we bought it back. So, it, there, we haven't gained, as far as I, I understand, a whole lot from it being on the tax roll. And I, my question is about how does it being part of a, is it TID or TIF district?
So, TID's, the D stands for district, F and TIF is for financing.
Okay, so, a TID district, impact anything that goes there for the long term? Because my understanding is like, it has about 25 more years on it, right?
Right.
So...
Yeah. So, the, do you want to answer that, Mike?
I'd be happy to answer that, but you can take a swing at it.
Sure. So, if private development was chosen as an opportunity for the site, then it's possible. It's not required, but it's possible that a developer could come forward and, like we'll see next week with Adam Coyle's apartment project, that analysis has come back from elders now. But they could request funding, basically is to fill the gap and say, but for TIF, for the financing, I wouldn't be able to afford this project. And we would do our analysis with elders and see, is that true? Do they, do they need this additional funding from the village? And essentially, what that is, is a MRO, missful revenue obligation, and it's sort of a waiver on their property taxes for a certain number of years, and it has to fit within that, you know, the life of the TIF, that 22 years or whatever is available when the project, but they pay it and then we refund it, right?
No, they pay it and then it, well, it depends on the, it depends on how the, the agreement is, if it's a pay-as-you-go.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would go that way, because they're the ones that have taken on the debt. So, what they pay in taxes goes back to them to help them pay their debt.
But simply, it's a, it's a tool we can use to attract development that wouldn't maybe otherwise be able to go there. So, again, sometimes affordable housing, like we see, we saw with the Lake Stone project, they needed TIF to meet the gap in order to, you know, pay for construction and management and all that stuff. The other opportunity the village has, of course, is to set whatever sale price they want to for the property, so we don't necessarily have to sell it for what we bought it for, but we could reduce the cost of the site, and then, that would sort of function as a grant or acts differently than TIF. But that's what we did for the Park Street property where Culvers is going. We sold it at a lower cost to Dan Bertler. He solicited proposals, he had an agreement that if it wasn't built within a certain time, he had to pay us back for the kind of market price for the property. So, there's a lot of different ways that we could use TIF or the sales price to attract different kinds of development to the site.
Okay, thank you.
All right, who's up next? Mike?
Yeah, that's part of how TIF affects this site, and I totally get, I mean, I've been, I think, fiscally conservative on this board. And, and I know I lean that way, my family calls me cheap. Putting something on the tax rolls and getting tax relief for our citizens is important. Taxes are too high. Our debt, as Randy mentioned, is too high. I think that's laudable. However, it, that might be the fiscally responsible thing to do if, if this land was on the east side of Main Street and not in a TIF, in a TID district. The fact that there's a TID district there means that taxes can, as you can probably attest to, Lisa, taxes potentially don't necessarily do what you want them to do. And you spoke to one aspect of, of the TIF, but there's another aspect, which is, which is paying for public services that a tax incremental district affects. I'm opposed to the RFP proposal because it assumes there's gonna be development here, and I think development on this lot is absolutely fiscally irresponsible for our village to do. And the reason is, is that this is one of those cases where taxes in a TID work differently than what you expect. And in this case, instead of saving our taxpayers' money, which is what you would expect to do by putting this on the tax roll, it's absolutely going to cost our taxpayers' money, not a little bit, but millions of dollars. Now, let me explain how this plays out. For those of you in the, the audience, I'm gonna, I'm just, and maybe people at the table here too, I'm just gonna run by real quickly how things work in a tax incremental district. So, if I have a house, and my house is worth $200,000, I'm paying taxes on it every year, and those taxes go to pay for schools and go to pay for, oh, EMS and fire and police, and getting the roads plowed and parks and libraries, and all those fun things that we really expect out of our community, okay? When a TID district forms, that $200,000 value that my house has, that's considered a base value. And that base value over the life of the TID will continue to pay for public school, public schools and, and, you know, public services and fire and EMS and everything else, okay? Now, let's say I take my $200 house, $200,000 house, and I decide I want to become a landlord, and I bulldoze the thing, and I build a fourplex there, and it... And it costs a million dollars, which is kind of cheap these days, but I want to make the, the, the formula here easy to understand. So, I build a million-dollar piece of property. That $200,000, every year, I'm going to get taxed on that million dollars. Okay? And the taxes that I pay on that original $200,000 base value, that's going to go to the village. That's going to go to the school district. That's going to pay for public services. The value I added to that property, the $800,000, the taxes on that portion get captured by the TID. And they go into a fund, in this case, TID districts or TID V fund. And that fund is used to pay for TID debt and pay for TID expenses and pay for giving money to developers to help finance new development, et cetera. Okay? Good so far? All right.
Start over.
The thing is, is money that goes into the TID V fund cannot be used to pay for schools. It can't be used to pay for police. It can't be used to pay for fire or EMS or election poll workers or any of the things that the village provides. It goes, it's sequestered inside of the TID fund. Now, TID V was formed on August 17th, 2017. At that point, the village already owned the lot on North Main Street. Its tax value was zero. It's the only piece of property inside of TID V that has a base TID value of zero. What that means is everything you put on there, you sell the property for $500,000. That's added value. That's increment. That's going to be captured. The taxes on that are going to be captured into TID V's fund. Okay, you build a building there, the taxes from that will be captured into TID V's fund. None of this will go to pay for public services. Not this year, not next year, not the year after that, not for the next 25 years. None of the public services that are provided to that building, that are provided to the residents of that building will be paid for by property taxes from that building. Who will pay for them? Every other person in the tax district that pays taxes. So, instead of lowering taxes, we are going to be raising them. Now, the question is, is how much does that amount to? Okay? And here, I'm going to give a shout out to Adam Coyle and his property because he put prices on how much he expects to pay for forty-nine apartments up there and what the appraised value is and all of that. And I looked at that and I said, okay, that's forty-nine apartment units. Let's assume we put an apartment building here on this lot, 249 North Main Street. That was thirty units. I think that's probably smaller than you would want, Jerry. Bigger than what I would want, but it's a nice compromise. It gives us a starting point. So, we have a piece of property for, let's see, what would that cost? Thirty units, it's thirty forty-ninths of what Adam Coyle did. That would be $5.7 million with an appraised value of $5.1 million. If we sold the land for $500,000, we've now got a property value there of fifty, $5.6 million. Okay, assessed value is a little bit less. You work all that out, and the tax value on a property of that size is about $97,000 based on last year's taxes. Okay? So, I want to pass something out. It'll help you go along with the numbers. Sorry to you in the audience, you don't get this. It'll be in the packet. You can pass it down, all right, whatever. I got lots of them. Okay, so, the interesting thing is, is if you pay $94,000 for taxes on this property this year, assuming a 3% growth rate in taxes, which I think is probably pretty reasonable and historic, okay? That'll be, that'll be $97,000 next year, $100,000 the year after that, $103, sort of adds up, you know? Totalling, I might add, $3.4 million between now and 2047 when that TID closes, which is the first year that that property taxes from that property will be used to pay for the services provided to that property. So, we will be spending $3.4 million because we were really eager to get this on the tax rolls and make $500,000. We will have spent more on public services in the first five years that this building is in place than we will have gotten from the sale of the property. And there's only twenty more years to go for us to shell out. Now, the interesting thing is last year, our property taxes didn't go up by 3%. They, mine went up by 5.2%. If we look at those numbers and extend 5.2% across 25 years, we're looking at $4.6 million. So, now we're in the ballpark. We've got $3.4 to $4.6 million that our taxpayers are going to have to lay out to, for this property, for the public services for this property. And we know that when you build a building and you put people in it, they are going to want to send their kids to school. They are going to want to make, they're going to want to go to the library. They're going to want to play pickleball. They're going to want to do all these sorts of stuff. And, that's a shout out to you people. Okay, they're going to want to do all this stuff, but they're not going to pay a cent for it. We are. Now, this is for 25 years. Jerry, you're a big fan of keeping taxes down for seniors. I guarantee you, they say two things in life are certain, taxes and, and death, right? Well, I guarantee you that the vast, vast majority of seniors in this village, and I've put myself in that ballpark, will be paying taxes on this, extra taxes for this property until I die. And I will never, and the seniors in this village will never see a benefit out of this because they won't be alive in 2047 to see any of this come due. So, I want to do the fiscally responsible thing here. I'm going to vote against the RFP because it has development in it. And I am going to vote against any development on this property.
All right, Jerry?
Yeah, just a question for Mike. What are we talking about right now? I thought that we were talking about 249 North Main.
We are.
Okay, but you've been talking about Adam Coyle.
Jerry?
You voted for the TID. Do you understand what it does? If you put property, well, how much property is there? How much taxes? We sit down every year, the village.
Hold on.
And we do a budget.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
So, the one, the one piece that you didn't mention is that the, the tax increment that's generated in a TIFF district is used to pay the debt service of that TIFF district. So, the repairs that we did on Main Street this year, the value that we're adding in anything that's being built in that TID district is going to go towards helping pay the debt service on that project. And then that respect, it actually, the residents won't be taxed on the debt service. It's going to be covered by the TID district. So, in that respect, it, it, in my eyes, it, it helps out. It's not that they're going to be paying the services on that property, but that the tax increment that that property is generating is going to help pay the debt service that the taxpayers will not have to pay for. Because right now in all of our TID districts, because they're underperforming, we do not generate enough tax increment in those districts to cover the debt service. So, we have to, we have to levy for that. So, just so you're aware of that part, every one of our TID districts is underperforming. And so, the residents are paying for the debt service on that as opposed to the TID district because there's no new development in it.
And so, Mike, I think you were using Adam's as an example, for an example.
Just a crazy example?
Yeah, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Jerry, that's what he was doing, Jerry.
Oh, he was just talking pretty fast there.
Okay, yeah, that's what he was doing.
Well, I'm trying to not take up the whole night and, and just watch all your heads hit the table.
All right, who else wants to weigh in? Derek? Go ahead.
Well, I'm supporting the, looking at the RFP as far as the neighborhood's concerns about water in the basement. So, that needs to be addressed regardless of how this ends up going in the end. Because I've, I've seen Alice and her husband out there pumping away. And it's, it's not fun to watch. But, that said, looking at the presentation from the Sculpture Park and all the other information that we've had come across from this lot over the last few months, I think it would be irresponsible and shortsighted not to look into what can go there. You know, for the last few months, we've been very much trying to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed in any project that we do. But we're finding that with the J.C. Park development, with the multiple bids that we have going on tonight, with the newly acquired Village Hall and the construction that's underway there and with the library project not even having had broken ground yet, that we're falling short on a number of these projects that we thought were just, were bought and paid for basically already. Hate to say it, but we've been spending a lot of money hemorrhaging cash at exponential rates. And I think this needs to slow down and at least be looked at as a possibility. And I can understand what Mike's saying about TIFF. I understand it, but we also need to look at our net new construction in the village and how that all relates as well.
Okay, Amanda?
Okay. I, I really like the presentation about the Sculpture Garden. I think that, in my view, may be the highest and best use of that particular area. I don't know when we, as a village, are going to have an opportunity that's similar. I appreciate the, the bold vision. I don't want us to be shortsighted and, and put something there that's going to be there for 50 years that isn't really going to make a huge difference in the scheme of things. Whereas the Sculpture Garden, I can see being a huge benefit to all of our citizens. It'll be tourism dollars. It's going to help us grow. And that is a, a vision, a big, bold vision for Oregonwick that can help define our village. Okay? So, that's kind of where I'm sitting right now, okay? But I do want to clarify what this motion that you're bringing means. The way I understand it is that we're at, we'd be asking Van De Waal to talk to neighbors, to kind of get a feel for what's out there, to, to decide, you know, how, give, give us advice about the possibilities for that property. But we wouldn't actually be putting out any request for proposals until Van De Waal came back to us and said, here's, maybe they recommend a request for a proposal, but maybe they don't, right? We're just asking them to look at the property and to tell us what our options would be. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, and I think one amendment we could make, if you guys wanted to discuss this, would be to take out of their scope the actual development of an RFP. That's sort of the, that last bullet point there in the memo. But it could just involve doing that due diligence, gathering documents that are on the site, doing a little bit more kind of, you know, site planning of what might, might actually fit, given the conditions of the site. And then also leading the community engagement process through the conversations and workshops and surveys and things that I was talking about earlier. And then we could ask them just to come back and do a presentation of, here's sort of what we've learned. And here would be our recommendation moving forward, given all this information we've heard from the community. And then at that point, we can decide, do we want to do an RFP with development? Are we going down the road if we want this to be public space? So, we could, you know, incrementally release Van De Waal to do kind of that next step of an RFP if that's the direction we decide to go. But that doesn't need to be part of their scope initially.
Okay. So, with that in mind, I do think that we need to take our time a little bit with this property because we just had this presentation. I think people need to kind of sit with the idea for a while. So, I like the idea of, of asking Van De Waal to do this, but not make, not sending out any kind of request for proposals just yet. But I like talking to people. I like getting information. I, I'm supporting that.
So, Amanda, I mean, that, that's, that's how I read this. It's just a, it's just a, take us through a process, a fair process. Find out what, what does the, what does the village residents want? Be, ask people. It may, may become a sculpture garden.
Right.
But it's just a process, like we, I think we would do with any, any other property, just to, let's find out. That's all. Yeah, Carleen?
So, I'm wondering if we need to offer then a friendly amendment to take that third bullet point off? Is that, would that be appropriate, Elise?
Yeah, I think that would be fine. Again, they'll provide a proposal and do the work that we asked them to do. And we can just kind of set those, you know, waypoints in the journey and say, let's stop, kind of reevaluate and decide what's the next step forward. And this process might, you know, is probably going to take several months to do. So, it'll give the community time to sit with all the ideas that will come forward.
And so, so, Carleen, that, I made the motion, that's fine with me.
Right.
If it's fine with Jerry.
Offer a friendly amendment.
We'll take that off. Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, just one other question. Then what, what are we looking at for cost for that, a rough estimate?
I mean, it kind of depends on the, the depth of, I think the community engagement is usually what takes the most time. So, if we want to do, you know, several community workshops and a survey and all of that, and ask them to develop and lead us through some of those meetings, the cost will go up. But I would imagine if we want to try to keep the process, you know, maybe through the summer or something like that, you know, maybe $5,000, five to 10, depending on, again, a lot of it's just going to be gathering information that already exists and kind of presenting it to us and then the community engagement process. So, yeah, I would say.
And that would be brought back, that, that's a proposal that would be brought back before you for review and approval.
Right, before we'd actually release them to do the work.
Yeah.
All right, Derek.
So, if it's an exorbitant amount, we can choose.
Derek and then Mike.
Just kind of going back to what Amanda was saying about the Sculpture Garden Park. You know, it's, it's, it's an interesting concept and idea. And I applaud Randy for his work in getting the grants for the public art throughout the community. When I look at what we're spending money on right now, when I look at the Sculpture Garden Park's presentation, we're talking nature, kids learning, opportunities. And I find that with that, in that proposal, we've already, are, we're already footing the bill for that as part of our $10 million library project. That's been beaten to death by moving that building out there is the educational opportunities, the opportunities for oneness with nature. And I can't help but notice two noticeable absence from your endorsers. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't see either the Nature Alliance or Friends of the Anderson Park. That's not to say that some of their members don't endorse it, or do endorse it, but they're not there yet. So, as far as one with, one, oneness with nature, I find that we're already spending those dollars somewhere else within the village at the moment.
All right, Mike?
Yeah, I could support the RFP motion and if in addition to removing bullet point three, you strike the first sentence of bullet point one. Because I don't believe this should be developed. I believe it's going to cost our taxpayers a ton of money.
So, Mike, make it clear, what, what?
There's a statement, the first sentence of bullet point one is evaluation of the properties to develop key information for developers. I don't believe this property should be developed.
So, are you saying take the four developers off?
Sure.
I think we should vote on that.
Elise, what's your?
Yeah, I mean, I think the information that would be gathered through that diligence process would be the same, regardless of if it's for development or not. It's really just to prepare kind of existing conditions, what's known right now for the site. But if that's language that you would feel more comfortable removing, then, you know, that's something you guys can vote on. And we'll just pass forward to Van De Waal, whatever, you know, to be included in their scope that you. you know, to be included in their scope that you all would like us to move forward.
Okay.
Carleen has a.
Yeah, sorry, Carleen.
So what if it were to just say evaluation of the properties to develop key information for its use? And then it leaves it open to however we decide to move forward. Jerry, are you okay with that?
I'm thinking about it right now, but I think we need to know if there's any interest from a developer in that property at all.
Well, that would be part of what would come, would come out of the evaluation of key information for its use. The way it reads right now is for developers and
Yeah, so Jerry, we wouldn't really be hearing responses about interest from a developer until we would actually put out kind of a packet or RFP of information about the packet. So I think, you know, what sounds like is being proposed is just steward of diligence, gather information on the site about what potential uses might be appropriate there. What do we know about the site? Do the public participation process. And then let's stop there, kind of re, you know, gather and see where we're at before we decide, you know, to move forward, either developing an RFP or moving in a different direction.
So Randy, can I offer a friendly amendment then?
Yeah, let's, so take out three then to
Okay, so the first bullet point would read evaluation of the properties to develop key information for its use. Advise the village on any pre-RFP activities to act upon, da-da-da-da. Public participation plan to gather feedback from the community and relevant stakeholders to develop and refine project goals and preferred uses. And then strike the third bullet until after Vandewall comes back with a report.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah. Jerry, you okay?
Why not?
All right. I'm okay with it. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Let's
What are we voting on? Are we agreeing with any of this here?
Yes.
I wrote it on mine.
Carleen?
So the motion that I have is to follow staff's recommendations outlined in the memo with the amendment of changing the first sentence in the first bullet point after the scope of work for Vandewall and removing the word developers to its use.
Can you put that up on the screen? The bullet points that we're talking about so that people can see? These are what bullet points we're talking about.
So in the first bullet point, removing four developers and we're putting for its use. And then we're eliminating the third bullet point altogether. That's the motion I have.
Okay. That's the motion I made.
Yeah.
Well, there's a motion on the board.
Right, but I offered him a friendly.
Jerry, you okay? All right. All right, so we got a motion, a second, a couple amendments. Let's take a vote on this. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. There we go. We got some direction.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, we need to take a break. I've been told in my ear here. It's time.
Randy?
Yeah.
Before we go on a break, could I ask you, since the people from Pickleball are still sitting here, could we move up that portion of the agenda to
Yeah, we can. We'll do that.
Till right after the break?
Jeff, you okay with that? Okay, yeah, after the break, we'll take it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, five-minute break, folks.
Good call.
I got it. I got this.
I'll be back.
Yeah.
I don't vote for it.
No, just
He sounds so
Oh, no, not you, not at you, with you. With you. Is there anything left? Are we voting for anything? Do we have some buzz and adds?
No, camel is a horse. I know. You know that you can ride ostriches? There are, and there are like, there's a comedian out there that did this. And he has a sign, ostriches. It was like, she got it. So they're not like, you put the bag over the ostrich. You get on, they say, don't grab its neck. And then the ostrich is fine, it's going to walk camel back until he goes like the foot off. And then this bird just kind of looks around and, you know, and then just ticks him.
And I'm tall, you know?
Two pieces, you know? So that
Can we make it real? You look cute today. So like, I would do hard work, like bottom down and really clean, you know?
No?
Good.
Nope. I got some. I got a couple things. I got one from
But I wasn't, I wasn't responding in the top part on your email.
Why, I said it to you too.
Right. Yeah, but I'm blind.
Yeah.
Yeah, so people won't necessarily respond to you.
Right.
I thought I'd
I can say, do I honestly? I mean, they're just like the
Or clean underwear. This is great. This is what I work to you.
This is what I'm
The pastor, he said, thank you. So I think we did, we did what we intended to do.
I have to tell Rachel. Just saw her. Ardella, Ardella.
Jeff? Do you want me, do you want us to? What do you want us to do? We got three motions.
Yeah, we'll go through all.
Do you want to? When do you want to address? Which one is it? Just tell me, okay? Okay. All right.
I have her last name.
Let me find it.
Okay.
Is there right up?
Okay, everybody, we're back. Let's go. We got lots of things to get through tonight. Alright, so we're, we're gonna move nine A, B, and C up. We had some pickleball folks here. So, it's unfinished business, items for discussion, possible action. We'll take nine A first, is review bids of J.C. Park redevelopment project, contract A. Rebids for the general site construction, including alternates, and consider awarding contract. Staff recommendation is motion to accept the base bid and award the contract for contract A. General site construction in bid alternative number four, baseball backstop netting system from Fisher. Excavating incorporate in amount of three million sixty-three, four-one-eight dot four-zero. So Jeff, you wanna?
That's a motion.
Well, not, not a motion yet. Anybody wanna make a motion? Jerry?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, and Amanda. Alright, we got a motion and a second on table for you. Jeff?
Alright, before everyone keys my car.
That's a village vehicle.
That's a village vehicle that has damaged the public property. I am not opposed to pickleball. I am also not opposed to children's playgrounds and adult playgrounds and other things associated with what we will call the remainder of J.C. Park West reconstruction. So, I'm gonna go over a few things tonight and just kind of walk through where, how we got to where we are today. And, I mean, this has been a multi, multi-year process. I wanna say five years.
We started in September of?
September of?
Two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen. So, almost coming up on five years. And with meeting with multiple, multiple times, very early mornings with many different clubs, groups, baseball group, soccer, the pickleball joined us after a while.
Seven o'clock.
I know, seven o'clock AM.
I hated this.
Well, I mean, it's normal time, but I mean, it's, but it's still an early morning. And, and really coming together with a lot of different plans. I think we had probably upwards of ten or twelve revisions to the plan. In fact, we ended up really leaning on Rettler numerous times and finally agreeing just to pay them for the so many different renditions they had. And, and it actually was weird, 'cause I was going through this whole pile of stuff that we're gonna be throwing away, and I came across three or four plans, renditions that were brought before the park board, brought before the village board. All of those did include pickleball. And pickleball is still part of J.C. Park West. That is, it started off as six courts and it went to twelve courts and, and courts, not quartz. And Mike Brown was very accurate in saying that, you know, when we looked at putting an alternate into phasing and everything, and, you know, we, they agreed saying, okay, yeah, we can cut it down to six quartz, and we said, we will put it in as an alternate. It was put in as an alternate with one reason, because it was, it was never part of the original park plan and budget. When we started this, we had a budget of about four million dollars, and it did not include pickleball, which I think our engineers at the time were estimating were about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, I think. And that's kinda where these numbers have all gotten around with fundraising and everything like that. We had some clubs step up and very generously donate large sums of money. We have the checks, big checks still upstairs. Oregon Community Bank contributed a lot of money to, to the project. They're a very, a large sponsor. And, actually not Oregon, I'm sorry, One Community Bank.
That's fine.
It's hard to shake, it's hard for me to shake that. Yes, but in our hearts, you'll always be Oregon Community Bank. And, and so, very, very long process to get even to the point of design. And, and there were some, many reiterations to get to that point. When we finally got to that point, we did agree, or the village board at that time did agree to borrow the, I think it was three and a half million dollars. Was it a half million dollars and then three million dollars the following year, Lisa? And then?
It was a million and a million, I think.
Huh?
Borrowed a million and then we borrowed another million.
But, but our budget was, no, we had three million dollars. I mean, the budget, the original budget was about four billion dollars for the project. Okay? So, when, when we did go under, or under design last year with Rettler Corporation, about six, seven months ago, I would say, life, time just flies, but it seems like a lot longer, but maybe not that. They came to us and said, we're gonna be honest with you, with the bidding market, there's no way that we can build the entire project with the funds that you have borrowed. So, in other words, we don't want to put a, a project out on the, on the street that we can't build physically with the money that we have. We looked at it, and we said, okay, we have to look at our phasing plan. We never wanted to phase this, but that's unfortunately happening with a lot of projects, and we've had to cut back a lot of projects. So we did that, and we came up with a phasing plan, and, but we also said, under the chance that we would get some really good bids, and every once in a while, you get a contractor comes in and they really wanted to do the work, they give you a fantastic price. We've had good luck with being able to put things in as alternates. And, and so, we did that on this project. We had many alternates. We had the pickleball courts. We had the adult playground, well, we'll call it the, the children playground with the, the soft surfacing and everything. Then we have like an adult playground addition that had balance activities and stretching activities and that type of stuff that we worked with the senior center representatives on that. We had the, the netting for the back, the backstops. So those were put in as alternates with the idea of, if we come in and we really get some great prices on things, we can add those in. So again, pickleball was not, I mean, we didn't do that for the other field. We didn't do that for the other playing fields out there, the other ball field. So we, we, as you know, we went out in February and we opened up contracts for the site work. And that site work came back, well, we, we don't wanna dredge that, but it came back really screwy. And we just were not comfortable with that. We had the, the contractor show up here and, and explain, try to explain to us why he wanted to charge us five-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars for six dugouts, you know, which does not make sense. And so we went, we went out for a rebid. We actually were able to get, instead of three bids this, this second time, a total of five qualified bids. You can see those, those range from Fisher Excavating at three-point-oh-one-nine million to Parisi Construction at three, three-million-four-hundred-thousand dollars. Now, the good thing is, is by going out to rebid, our low bid number came in a hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars less than what we were with a low bid on the previous project. We, we told you there'd be no guarantee that that would happen. Fortunately, we had a good, strong bid. We've worked with Fisher Excavation, are excavating on the Park Street and Janesville Street, or, yeah, Park and Janesville intersection, intersection project. We also worked with them on the Lincoln Road project. They were the prime on both of those. They did a nice job. So that's why we are recommending tonight, three-point-oh-one-nine-million-nine-hundred-five-thousand-and-forty cents to Fisher Excavating. We did look at the bid alternates, and we also talked, spoke with our consultant on this. We also spoke with representatives from the high school and other sports organizations on some of these alternates. We also met, because, you know, we're, we're talking here right now just about contract A, and that's the only thing that's on the table, but I'm gonna discuss contract B and contract C as well. Contract C was the site electrical, and so we had that, and then we also, I'm sorry, contract B was the site electrical. Contract C is the site concession stand building. Okay? So when we're looking at this, we have a certain pot of money. And as staff, Martin, myself, Lisa, Elise, everyone here has been working on allocating funds to be able to construct this project and have enough funds to be able to do it, do it well. And you have to, you cannot go into a project like this without some contingencies, because there's always something that's gonna happen. Soils, materials, I don't know, you know, things just happen, and they're, they're much smarter you do at the time. So, we sat down and we've, we've come up with a, I think, a very interesting way to fund everything, and it's, it's all, I mean, we've, we've gone through it, and we'd be happy to go through it, but, you know, to, to how we can fund the different items. What we came out of that was that the baseball and backstop netting system was the alternate for, for forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. That is a system, it's on the, it's on the fields that are on J.C. Park East, the high school fields over there. It's a series of poles, and the netting is lowered and raised every year. It takes about an hour to an hour and a half to do that. It's a much, much, much better viewing arrangement than, and it, and it's, it's basically what almost all of the fields are going to right now. It's Beacon Athletics, and it's coming out of, I think, Middleton. And our, our consultant highly recommended we do it, and we looked at it, and we said, well, that's, that's an alternate we can do. We understand the pickleball folks really want new, brand-new pickleball courts. We would love nothing more than to be able to give them pickleball courts, but we also have to know that when you're going into a project, I've done remodel projects, I've done all sorts of projects, you, you have to decide what, what you're gonna do and when you're gonna do it. It is part of the project. It's part of phase two. When we wanna do phase two, we'd love to do phase two right after phase one, but we have to get through phase one first. It's part of the design. Mike, you mentioned all the different courts around the area. Correct me, but Oregon does have six pickleball courts, correct?
Oregon has six courts at Oak Street.
Correct.
Which is virtually unplayable now, and you know that because of the conditions of the courts.
And they're not dedicated.
Right.
These other courts are all.
I understand. I understand. Yeah, no, I understand. But, but we have six pickleball courts in the village, and they're used. They're used a lot. I love, I love going through. Okay. And you know what? I have choices to go places when I, you know, if, if I wanna go places or not. We're trying to work towards a solution. But we do have six pickleball courts that are used, and, you know, what I've committed to is we're submitting a, a grant application that would allow us to pulverize and put a whole new surface on the courts next year, new painting. You know, I've talked with you about how the lighting, the lighting standards are all rotted and failing. They're supposed to get cut down, I believe, tomorrow. So we've had the courts closed up to this point. We're hoping to be able to open them tomorrow or the following day, as soon as they can get them down and we can have a safe environment again. So, long story short, you know, we've put a ton of hours into this. We've looked at it from every conceivable angle of as far as where we can work with the money that we've borrowed, where we can do this without digging ourselves further in debt, how we can do this and still leave funds available for the concessions building. We feel that the concession building is an extremely important part of this project. The bidding time and the materials were very poor when that was bid. We are optimistic that we can value engineer and lower that cost by a couple hundred thousand dollars. And we've kind of allocated that as part of the money remaining, as well as some contingency funds. So, you know, the goal is, we'll get the, you know, we, we, our goal is to try to get as good a surfaces for people to play on. And, you know, granted, I know it's not ideal. Those courts were built in nineteen-seventy-six. So, they've, they've lived their, they've lived a long life. They've been used a ton. They are used by both tennis and pickleball. And so that's, the reasoning for our recommendation is exactly that.
Okay. Anybody snap anything? So, so Jeff, if, I mean, you're, you're trying to do the best you can with the amount of money. If something, something miracle happens, you know, well, we'll, we'll do the best we can.
We're always asking for, for donations. I mean, honestly, if, if people, I, you know, I think it'd be a great opportunity. If pickleball were to go out and raise a hundred, whatever the base bid was for that alternate, raise a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars and come to us and say, can we add it to the contract, we'd wholeheartedly say yes, you know, but that's, that's just not been the case. I believe, and, and they've, they've worked hard to raise. They've raised about, I think, I checked this afternoon, seventy, about seventy-five, seventy-six-hundred dollars. And that's tough to do when, you know, you're a group, and there's a lot of people out there looking for money, but, asking for money, but.
Alright. Anybody else? Mike?
Yeah, a couple questions here. When's phase two? When would you see that reasonably occurring?
Depends on when you're willing to borrow approximately one and a half to two million dollars would be the estimate.
My idea of exercise is sitting up, so I honestly, I mean, this isn't my sort of deal at all. But, so this might be put off for years, is what you're saying?
Like I said, I, I would love to see us go right from phase one into phase two. I know it's, it's additional borrowing. My recommendation would be to do that, because sometimes if you don't do it, it becomes an afterthought project, and you never do it. We have cut one of the fields out of the quad, the fourplex. You know, we talk about use of these areas. We talk about keeping our hotel busy and our restaurants busy. Culver's is gonna be busy. When you build these fields and everything, and these complexes, and tournaments come, just whether it's for anything, pickleball or anything else, people come, and, and people come to the village, and we've seen it. But I'd love to build the fourth field today. I'd love to build the other play, we call them playing fields, not soccer fields, but, 'cause they're used by a lot of different sports. We'd love to build all twelve pickleball courts, you know? And I should note, I know pickleball was talking about lighting the courts. We are not lighting anything out at the project with the exception of the mezzanine area, street lighting, and all the underground conduit that would go to the lighting pedestals for future installations. If that makes sense. So that's what contract B is, is for the site electrical.
Okay, so we're not actually putting lights on the pedestals at this point?
Correct.
Because of the cost?
Correct.
Now, we're deferring the building, from what I saw in here, till at least the end of this year?
Correct.
Probably?
We'd love to maybe bid, bid that out again in September or October. Catch contractors who are wrapping up for the year and looking to possibly do some fill-in work over the winter and into the spring of next year.
So you would see this then being built over the winter?
Could be, yes.
Okay. Is the current pickleball courts playable once the lights are fixed or cut down, whichever the alternative might be?
I've gone out there, I've gone out there and walked all the courts myself. There are cracks out there. And it's funny, because a, a lot of them are not uneven cracks. They're, they're just surface cracks, and I know it's less than ideal. You know, it's, it's interesting, because a couple years ago, I was told, well, it's unplayable, and it's unsafe. And I said, well, if it's unsafe, we should close them. And then they said, no, we don't wanna close them. So, I just, you know, I want it to be safe, but, and a few years ago, we tried to fill in the cracks. That was kind of a, a mess. We did have a quote, I think we resealed it in twenty-fifteen. I think we had a, a whole resurfacing done, and that only lasted for about a year and a half. So, are they playable? In my opinion, yes. There's people out there playing on them when we have the courts open.
Okay, alright. Has this gone before the park board?
No.
Would it make sense, since the park board meeting's tomorrow night, to put this to the park board and then bring it to our next meeting, which is only next Monday?
I would recommend not doing that, because the, the bid, we're running up very close on the time for contract B, which is a sixty-day time period for award of the contract after, after bid opening, 'cause we had to go back and rebid everything. The park board is an important asset. They've, they've gone through every revision on this. They've gone through the, the, the sequencing and the phasing of this. There's nothing new for this, other than, I mean, I, the park board can make a recommendation, but you are the governing body.
Yeah, I just wanna be sure we're including our, I mean, that's why we kicked the conservancy issue to the park board, was to be sure that they're a partner in the process.
If you'll see in contract B, we have a very good bid price from electric construction, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand and change less than, and I would hate to lose that.
Is it possible we could vote on part B tonight, and you could take the other parts to the park board tomorrow night and bring them back here on Monday?
They're not on the agenda for tomorrow night?
They aren't? I thought the whole J.C. Park was on the agenda. They're on the agenda.
Uh, we can't, I mean, this is your decision as a board.
That would be my take.
So Mike, what do you?
I personally think it just delays it a week. I, nothing, our recommendation of the park board is not gonna be any different than what you're hearing tonight.
Oh, I realize that. I just want them involved in the process, rather than give them a fade-out complete.
Yeah, and they have been very involved through the process.
Okay.
So?
Yeah?
So this isn't, just wanna clarify something. Pickleball courts are part of phase two.
Correct.
So they are gonna happen.
Correct.
It's just a timing issue.
Correct.
It's, has to do with when we wanna borrow that extra hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Is that what it's?
Phase two will be more than that.
Way more than that.
Right, but, but that's the, kind of a rough estimate of the pickleball portion of it.
Right.
So, putting it, I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, if we, if we're just talking about moving up borrowing that amount of money, would that fix it, or is it more complicated than that? That's what I'm?
You could borrow an additional one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars and add pickleball.
Lisa?
Lisa's told me I can't borrow any more money.
Okay.
The borrowing process is well into the process already. I mean, it's, I think next week is when we're bringing the resolutions for all the different borrowings that we're doing. We've revised the amount a number of times already, and they keep making changes. And last week, I told them that was the last change. So I would hate to have to tell them I wanna borrow money. 'Cause we have, we have, we have to, like, stop at some point, and so the process can move forward, because we have to do the resolutions. We have to set the sale date. We have to, you know, there's so many things. We have to have our.
We have projects that are, having to pay.
Yeah, so it's, it's pretty far along to have to.
Alright, so, so let's get, let's get back to, to nine A. So Jeff, your, your recommendation is that we go ahead and approve nine A?
Correct.
Okay, and we, actually, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor ready. So, let's, let's take care of nine A. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Okay. No?
No.
Abstaining?
I abstain too.
Okay.
Jerry, you shouldn't vote for Teds until you know what they do.
Alright, let's go to nine B then. Review bids for J.C. Park redevelopment project, contract B. Jeff's already talked about this, is site electrical construction, and consider awarding contract two, site electrical construction in amount of five-hundred-and-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and zero cents. Can we get a motion and a second on this one? Jerry? Amanda? Any discussion? Yeah, Derek?
Circle back. Jeff, back in two thousand fifteen, how much did it cost to resurface that, the courts out there?
It was twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred, I believe. Is that something about right?
I thought it was like seventy-eight thousand.
No.
No?
No, 'cause, I, I think, well, maybe I'm wrong, but I do know that the cost for us to do it now is about twenty-five thousand.
That would give them something along for another year and a half.
It sounds like they only lasted a year.
We're trying to tear them up next spring.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know. I've thought, I've thought through that a couple times too.
Alright, so we got a, we got a motion and a second for nine B. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
So, Jeff, then based on that response, we're gonna tear them up before there's any alternative?
What, on the pickleball?
Yeah.
We can hold off tearing them up. I mean, it, it really is gonna depend on if we get the grant money. The funding I have right now for tennis court maintenance, sixty-seven-hundred of that is going to help tear down the existing poles. So that's why we can't do resurfacing this year. We just don't have the funds for it. But, there's that possibility. You know, I've, I've talked to, in fact, I'm, I kinda wish Andy was here still, because, you know, high school has twelve courts over there, and, and I don't know why, you know, the high school hasn't allowed use of those. That'd be a perfect alternative. We, we allow the, the JV team to use our, our Oak Street tennis courts. So I kinda hope there'd be some reciprocation there, but.
So, so they, they don't allow us, anybody to use them?
I don't know.
We don't have lines even up there.
No, you can't, WA is competition part. You can't do a line.
Yeah.
Oh.
So the courts are available for public use.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Okay, alright.
So then on that vote, was it, did you vote on that one?
Yep.
So, yes?
Yes.
Yep, I think we all got yeses. Okay.
Alright, let's go to nine C. Review bids for J.C. Park redevelopment project, contract C. This is the concession building. Staff is recommending that we reject the bids for J.C. Park, contract C. And I think Jeff, because this came in like double what we were expecting.
Not like double, it was double.
Was double.
Mm-hmm.
What we were expecting. So, so the thing is to wait for the opportune time and hopefully get a better bid.
My goal is to try to get this down to the six to seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range.
Yeah.
You know, it just, we'll have to see if we can value engineer some stuff, and honestly, what we're being told is, sometimes on these contracts, they aren't really getting a close look. Someone just throws a number at them.
Okay, alright.
I mean, you look at the per, per square foot cost, if we are having to build a CMU building at four to five-hundred dollars per square foot for a non-heated, non-HVAC building, concession building, I, I shudder when I think it, what cost to build a library.
Yeah, yeah.
I know Jennifer, I know.
Yeah.
Jennifer just pan, I just lost two years of Jennifer's life there.
Yep.
But.
And this is a big item for the park.
It is a very big item for the park, yeah.
Alright, so?
I think we do better.
Okay. So we need a motion and a second. We're gonna, the, the motion is to, to reject the bids. Alright, we'll take Derek, and then I see Carleen. Any other discussion? Alright, so the, the motion is to reject this bid, as everybody knows. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And Randy, just in closing.
Yeah.
I really wanna say that we are working to try to get a complete park for everybody.
Yeah, we know you are.
I, I would love to be able to do everything out there today.
Yeah.
And I would love to have it lit. I would love to be able to have it done, but.
You only, we only have so much money, right?
I'd also like to own a yacht, and that's not happening right now.
Alright, thank you, Jeff. Alright, let's go back to. Alright, we're almost back to number one on the agenda. No, I'm just kidding. We're onto five, which is proclamations and announcements, and five A is proclamation recognizing the work of April seventeenth through April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two as municipal treasurer's appreciation week and further extension appreciation. extending appreciation to village treasurer Lisa Nowinski. So we, we could just, maybe, maybe Lisa, is it okay in, in the, in the spirit of time?
You don't have to read it.
Alright, we'll give you a copy. Alright, I was hoping you'd say that. Thank you.
Randy, can you sing it?
I could sing it.
I just, I just want to say a couple of things though.
Yeah.
I mean, I am the, the treasurer for the village. Candy is not only the village clerk, but she is my deputy treasurer. So we both kinda have dual, dual purposes. We are like, I'm her deputy and she's my deputy.
Yeah, well. We appreciate, we appreciate everything that, that, all our staff does and Lisa, yeah, this is.
And like my, the staff, all of the staff up there, especially John and Sue who are my, uh, my support people.
Yeah, yeah.
Throughout the years, so.
We're very lucky.
Yep, that's all I want to say.
Okay. Alright, let's go to five B. Upcoming meetings and events?
Oh, did you have something?
Oh, oh, we have one loan. Let's, let's, alright, let's move up, uh, where, what do we need to move up here?
We need to move up the, um, short-term borrowing.
Which number, number?
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
Seven's Martin and I don't know how to.
Alright, so, so let's move up seven Q.
Seven Q, okay.
Seven Q.
It could be worse, could be, it could be seven Z, right? Alright, so authorizing two hundred thirty-six thousand in short-term financing with Oregon Community Bank for twenty-twenty-two budgeted capital projects and equipment to be ref- refunded as part of the, a proposed twenty-twenty-two general obligation bond. Staff recommendation is to approve and Lisa, do you want to say anything or?
Sure, I just want to let you know, so the reason we have to do the short-term borrowing is, um, these are considered Geo note eligible items that are being, um, financed to the short-term borrowing. And then once we do that, we can refund it through our Geo bond that we're gonna be doing and doing the res- resolutions for next Monday. Um, then that way we have just one borrowing. Two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar Geo note would not be attractive to anybody to even bid on. So that's why we have to do the Geo, basically the Geo note for short-term borrowing and then we roll it into our larger bonding so that we get better bids on it and more bids and hopefully a really good interest rate.
Okay. Alright, we'll take a motion in a second. Mike? Need a second. Carleen, alright. Any other discussion? All, or we, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, Scott, thanks for hanging, for sticking around with us. Yeah. Alright, thank you.
It does say Oregon Community Bank here, by the way.
It does. I, that's how I read it. I just read them as I see it. Alright.
It's an all.
Alright, we're on to five B. Upcoming meetings and events. We have the calendar to put in our um, calendars ourselves. Six is report of village officers. Uh, we have Martin's always very detailed village administrative report. Uh, six B is, oh, you, oh, Mister, Mister Wunsch has got a, he's not here.
I have a question for Martin, but I think Rachel can answer it. Martin refers to a meeting with the town of Dunn's about the town of Dunn's future involvement in the senior center. What's that about?
Um, the senior center has a municipal service agreement that, um, the town of Oregon, the town of Rutland and the village of Oregon are all parties to. Originally, back when the senior center first came into existence, um, and there was a separate service agreement, the town of Dunn was a party to that contract. The town of Dunn chose to leave that contract in about maybe two thousand twelve. Um, and they have just been starting to ask some questions about what it might look like if they chose to come back and become a member of that contract. Um, for the last several years, they've made a donation to the senior center, um, at a flat rate, but they've not been members of the operating expense contract.
Okay, thank you, Wunsch.
Yeah, and Mike, so we, we've been sort of meeting with them, kind of rekindling, uh, for the longest time, maybe there wasn't any joint meetings together, just to get together, and we started redoing that, and I think that that has sort of maybe, um, one reason why, maybe they, like, let's, hey, maybe we should look at that again.
Good.
Yeah, which I think is a good thing. So, alright, uh, six B is director of public works. Jeff, do you have anything for us?
Just a memo in the, the packet there about we will be opening bids on May fifth. We're getting some interest on the, uh, project, so we're hoping for good bids.
Okay. Uh, six C is village department head staff. Anybody, consultants, anybody? Alright.
Oh, I'll just say one thing. It's never too early. It's never too early to plug the, uh, Broadbass, so.
That's right.
For calendars, May sixth between eleven and one will be the senior center's drive-through Broadbass.
May sixth or last?
May sixth.
That'll be here before we know it.
It will, and hopefully the weather will be lovely. We could take today, Xerox.
Yep.
That's, is that, isn't that the garage sale weekend?
Yes.
Yeah, it's always.
That's even better.
These are new.
Sale.
These are not.
They're new broads.
Alright, yeah. Alright, thank you. Uh, let's see, so seven, or five D is village board comments. I just want to thank everybody. I sort of have connected with everybody on, on, uh, committee assignments and stuff, so I think we're all set and so that'll come, uh, on Monday. Get that settled. So, anybody else? Or, is it Tuesday?
Tuesday's a reord.
Okay, Tuesday. It all sort of blends after a while, doesn't it? Anybody else?
It's all one big meeting.
All one ma- big meeting.
Never go home.
Yeah, I know, you might just stay here. Anybody else? Anything? Okay. Seven, communication miscellaneous business. Uh, seven A, approval of vouchers in the amount of six hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and seventy and seventy-five cents. Let's get a motion in a second. We'll get it on the table from Mike and Amanda. Alright, questions? Go for it, Mike.
Uh, just two. Um, item eight thousand, there's a boiler replacement there. What's that about?
That's at the police department. It was a boiler replacement. Just due for it.
Okay, I was wondering which building it ended up going into.
I'm pretty sure that was ours.
I hope it was yours. I surely didn't do that.
Yeah.
Ours would have been hers.
And then number one, three, one, four, eight, there's a pretty significant amount of money there labeled prosecutions.
That's the monthly, um, the monthly bill we get from the attorney or the Spears Schneider, yeah, for the court.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Anything? Alright, Candy, voice vote? Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bashin?
Yes.
And it looks like Bali gets out right now. Hilo?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, seven B, claim for vehicle damage submitted by Agniska?
Agnes, I think.
Oh, Agnes, okay. Um, I can't even, I said last name in.
Indelicato.
Indelicato. I never would have got that one. Staff recommendation is to motion to affirm statewide services recommending to disallow the claim. If we, do we need any background or anything? Yeah.
Well, is, is there a motion first?
Yeah, let's get a motion in a second. Alright, Amanda and then Carleen, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, we received a, a call from, um, I think it was Oregon Police Department and, uh, that basically the individual was parking their car right on the curb line along Sterling Drive. And, uh, when the wheel went over the, the catch basin inlet metal grate, um, either the grate wasn't there or it was seeded or whatever, but it, the, the tire went into it. And so the whole front of the car came down to the ground and damaged the bumper and everything. We, I, we did provide them with a claim, uh, sheet and, um, provide them with what they needed to submit as we do with everybody that, that wants to make a claim against the village for that. Um, the adjuster talked to us. Um, usually these come down to whether we knew of any kind of, uh, something wrong out there. And, um, if we know of something and we're not actively doing something to make it better, then that can open the village for liability. This is a situation where we don't know, it could possibly have been a snowplow that would jart, but, you know, when Nick looked at it, he says he doesn't see how it could have happened that way. Could have been someone dropped something down there. Maybe keys or whatever, went to put the grate back, didn't get it seeded all the way. We don't know. And so that's why it's being, um, denied by the insurance carrier.
Okay, alright.
Or recommended for denial.
Yeah, dis- disallow claim, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, since then, their attorney, their, um, insurance company has reached out to us to ask that the village would consider paying the claim since the insurance denied it and/or paying the deductible, but we suggested that we were following our insurance's, um, advice and if they wanted to come ask the board that to come to the meeting.
Okay, alright. Alright, so we got a motion in a second to disallow the claim. Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, seven C, professional service agreement between the village of Oregon and, and Carlson Dickman Consulting for employee classification and compensation services. And I, I think Candy, we had a little modification on this one, right?
We did. We had a little language modification under, um, item eleven for, um, trade secrets and that has been updated in the packet, um, with a clean version. So we just asked that you need to approve that language change and it was really, um, the language was kind of developed after the packet went out. And it's just, um, it's just to reflect both sides, protect both sides' interests.
Okay.
Meaning the consultant as well as us.
Alright.
And wh- and what number is this in the?
Eleven. So Jeff, can you scroll?
Eighty-seven.
Can you scroll to the?
Okay.
It's item seven C. So I did a redlined version just so you could see the changes that were made. Right there, right there, yep.
This stuff?
Yep.
They do know we published that in the last packet, right? Okay.
Trade secrets.
Highly confidential.
Alright.
We did take that down right away too.
Yeah. Alright, do we, do we motion?
Um, you should just do a motion, um, to accept the.
The change?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion in a second to accept that new change. Derek?
And the agreement itself.
And the agreement itself, okay. Derek and then Amanda, any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I actually had a question related to something that's later in the packet about an extended leave. The seven P.
Can we, can we get, wait to?
Well, it, the reason why I want to ask it now and it, the answer could be no, is that we don't currently have a policy and I wondered if that was something that actually ought to be considered in this whole.
We do, we do have, in our handbook, it does say that you have to get written, um, written authorization from the village board.
Yeah, I just wondered if, uh, but it's on a case-by-case basis. I just wondered if they're ne- if wanted to have an overall policy, that's all, and if they would, if that would be something that would be appropriate to be part of.
Isn't this thing just mostly dealing with compensation?
Okay, okay, yeah.
It's not really the, the benefit.
That's a good, it's a good question though, Carleen.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like a, that's a benefit kind of thing, so it would be, could be in that.
Alright, so.
So not really the answer.
So do we have a motion?
I think we had a motion in a second. I think Derek and then Amanda too, so, alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're, we're getting there. Down to seven D, amended agreement providing the joint operation, maintenance of fire protection and emergency medical services between the village of Oregon and towns of Oregon, Dunn, and Rutland. Staff recommendation is to approve. Can we get a motion in a second? Get it on the table?
Alright, Derek, Carleen, do you have your hand?
Yeah.
Okay. Derek and Carleen. Um, I, I will tell you that when I was on Fire EMS, we were working on this. This has been like a four-year adventure and now Derek, Derek has got some, um, familiarity with it too, so. Alright, so we got a motion in a second. Anybody have any, any discussion on it?
Yeah, I just, it occurred, I mean, just seems if the village is paying sixty-five percent of the budget and only has two votes, that just seems out of, out of whack.
Alright, duly noted. Anybody else? Yeah, Amanda?
I mean, I noticed that too.
Yeah.
Um, if we, I, I mean, I don't necessarily want to hang up this tonight, but would it be something that if we pass this tonight, we could look at changing that?
I think, I think that's a reasonable suggestion.
Like to bring to the committee to discuss?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we could do this and then we could amend it.
Yeah, I wasn't saying I was opposed to it. I just, it, it stood out to me and I think it's worth noting.
And I'm curious what the process would be to change it.
I mean, I think it's a good follow-up. Let's follow up to that, because I think it's a valid point.
Okay.
So, alright, we got a motion in a second to approve this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, uh, E. Uh, five-year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-seven maintenance agreement with coming sale and service for ongoing maintenance, testing of wells. Four and five generators in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty-one and forty-five cents. Jeff, I assume this is just a, a normal agreement?
Yeah, yeah, but I do want to, I want to just take a quick second and introduce the entire board.
Yeah.
Lauren Strigle. Lauren Strigle is the assistant director of public works now, uh, started four weeks ago.
Yep.
Yep, that's the longest four weeks of your life. You picked a great meeting to attend. Um, but, no, Lauren has been a tremendous asset, um, so far. Has really taken on a lot of activities with the water and the wastewater group, as you'll see in her memos tonight. So she'd be happy to answer any questions on the memos coming up, but we're really happy to have her on board.
Alright, if there's none, we'll take a motion in a second.
Oh, sure, I'll make a motion.
Alright, Amanda?
And Carleen?
Did you, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, nice memo. This is like you're learning from.
Yeah.
I got like four of them in this package.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? F, uh, purchase and of replacement actuators for the wastewater treatment plant, digester from Dorner Company in amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty. Recommendation is to approve. Can we get a motion in a second? Derek? I think I saw, Carleen, your hand? Your hand up? Alright, so we got, any discussion on this? Do we need to say anything, Lauren?
Way to get every bit of life out of them.
Yeah. Lauren, do you want to actually speak?
It's up to you guys.
Go ahead. You want to say anything about it or not?
Sure. Um, so this is an issue that occurred on March ninth. Um, staff went out to take a look at the wastewater treatment plant, specifically the digesters, and found that one of the actuators had failed pretty dramatically. There are photos. You can see the long stem is bent essentially in an S shape. And, uh, this is a steel, um, piece of metal that looks kind of like, like flexible plastic hosing. Um, it turns out that in fact both actuators had failed. It's just that they had failed differently. So one of them kind of was bent out of shape, the other one, it didn't show it, but when they had the, um, the techs come in and take a look, they said, well, actually both of these are, are done for. This is about the standard life that they expect to see out of these, so this is not, um, something that they didn't expect. What this has meant is that our wastewater treatment staff has had to do a lot of hands-on time with something that's usually automated. So they really have to babysit this digester, go out at intervals, switch pumps on and off, and it's just taking a lot of time out of their days. So this is a pretty standard ask. It's, um, fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars to just get the techs out for this particular brand, just to install new actuators and stems and make sure everything is calibrated and running appropriately again for them.
Alright. Alright, any discuss, any other, she did pretty good, didn't she?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, very good. Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think this, this one's yours too? Approval of water storage facility visual inspection, exterior cleaning services from Water Tower Clean and Coat Incorporated in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars? We don't need, you want, you want to say something? You don't have to?
Sure. I'll try to make this very short. These are just two pieces of related, but actually. Sure, I'll try to make this very short. These are just two pieces of related, but actually different maintenance that our water towers have to go through. The first is what's called a visual inspection, that is inside the storage facilities, and it's a DNR requirement. So every five years, we have to do what's, what's more accurately described as a remote interior visual inspection, so you can use an ROB, and go in there, as well as an inspection of the facility from the outside, and just make sure concrete's not in danger of cracking, this is not going to fall over. On the other interval, every ten years, we have to do something a lot more in-depth, but in this case, we're more on the, the remote side of things. The exterior cleaning is very self-explanatory. They go in, they clean off just unsightly dirt and debris that is kind of accumulated on these towers, treat it with an anti-mildew material, and, and then they just look a lot better. We did go out for two bids for each of these little components, and the water tower coat and clean, clean and coat, I'm sorry, was the low bid on both of them. So we've worked with them in the past, and they've done great work.
Alright, so we need a motion in a second, I didn't get that before. Derek and Carleen, anybody have any questions for Lauren? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're on to H, approval of hydrant painting services for three hundred and thirty-nine hydrants from Davies Water Ferguson Water Works, an amount of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-five. Recommend, motion is to approve. Can we get a motion in a second? Alright, Mike and Amanda, any questions? I always like a nicely painted hydrant, right? Mine's pretty red, right?
Red?
Aren't they red? They better be. Alright, alright, anybody, anybody?
Oh, you want it red?
Oh, Mike's got something?
Jeff, good delegation skills.
Thank you. Some of these projects have been on the books for a little while, so I'm just, I'm beaming inside.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, we got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Randy, can I say something quick about that one?
Sure.
I actually want to touch on the thing that wasn't just approved, the hydrant flushing, and give you guys a heads up. You may have seen through the Oregon Observer that our fantastic public works staff is going to go out and do a full village-wide hydrant flushing effort, I'm sorry, April eighteenth through April twenty-second, so two weeks from now. You may get calls from people on that. We did try to kind of jump out ahead of that with our Observer article. There is now also a website subsection on our public works page that explains what's going on, what residents might see, and why it's really nothing to worry about, and who they can contact if they're still concerned. So if you hear anything about that, that's what's going on.
Alright, very good, thank you. Yeah, Amanda?
Any reason you're not waiting till like the heat of summer when?
Well.
Because of town, we need our water, then.
Yes, exactly, yeah, we need the pressure. And our, our public work staff's schedules get pretty busy during the summer, so.
Just curious.
Yeah, we're hoping the weather's not terrible, and we're not just making sheets of ice, but we'll reconsider if it looks like that.
Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, uh, I, declaration of surplus and authorization to publicly auction miscellaneous public works department items. I assume Jeff, those were in our packet, what you want to do. So if we can get a motion in a second, Amanda and Derek? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we're on to J, approving purchase of a commercial ice maker for water and wastewater sampling from stately plumbing and heating, an amount of twenty-seven forty-five. Recommend motion is to approve. Amanda, Derek, any questions on that?
I, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just because I'm suddenly curious about it, because that's a lot of money for an ice maker. How often do you guys have to send samples?
We're sending samples out all the time.
Very regularly.
Yeah.
And you're actually, you're just going to buy ice at QuickTrip, or?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And it's actually, that price is actually pretty good for a commercial ice maker, to be honest with you. Yeah, I priced him out, and I think I put in thirty-six hundred in the budget.
That sounds about right.
So, yeah, this is good. And so with that extra, that will allow us to buy the commercial blender.
You're gonna send us all an invitation.
How about, what about the margarita machine?
Yeah, I was picturing guys filling the cooler.
No, no, we're gonna have some rules against stuff like that.
Alright, we got a motion.
Do you want to fill up your cooler at the wastewater plant?
No.
Alright.
The room it's in is like, you would look at it.
Alright, alright, we got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, K, memorandum of understanding regarding the use of Wisconsin Department of Justice ACISS, case management system between Department, Wisconsin Department of Justice and the Oregon Police Department. Chief, do we need to say anything?
I'll just be real brief. Wisconsin Department of Justice offers this information-sharing database. It's one of many out there. It can be very helpful with cases like human trafficking, major drug investigations, and just, most importantly, just deconfliction in any major cases. So let's say Chicago PD is working on a case that involves the same suspect that we just recently had move into our community. We can work together to try to make sure we're not stepping in each other's toes.
Okay.
Uh, but it's free, so that's, that's the big thing.
That's even better.
Yeah, yep. In the agreement itself, it talks about how whoever is authorized to, to have access to this has to attend training, and they have to follow very specific rules, which is pretty common for DOJ. The individuals that will have access are the lieutenant, detective sergeant, detective, and school resource officer.
Alright. Alright, can we get a motion in a second on this one? Amanda and Carleen, okay, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving along, L, seven L, three-year repayment agreement between Cassidy, Chief, how do you say, Richie?
Uh, Ruckty.
Ruckty, and the Village of Oregon for police officer employment expenses. Want to say anything?
Yeah, so she is still in the hiring process, but we want to make sure this doesn't slip through the cracks, and we just want to keep moving her along. So this is very standard with what you guys have seen in the past. She is in the academy right now, so that is why we're seeking this three-year agreement.
Alright, can we get a motion in a second? We'll get it on the table and see if anybody's got any question. Derek and Amanda, anybody have questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Seven M, golf event contract with the Legend of Bergamot for the police department's twenty-twenty-two putts-for-paws outing. Canon fundraiser set for August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. I think there was a little memo in our packet. Can we get a motion in a second on that one? Carleen and then Amanda, anybody have any questions for Chief? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Seven N, request to use unspent twenty-twenty-two police department salary and benefit funds for a fifteen hundred dollar to three thousand dollar sign-on bonus for hiring a vacant police department officer position. Let's get, why don't we get a motion in a second, see if there's any questions. Amanda and, somebody give me a second. Carleen, thank you. Alright, Chief, I don't know if you want, you want to say?
Yeah, just because this is a bit outside of our, our normal.
It is.
Um, it is incredibly competitive right now in our profession, hiring, like many other professions. So we're really trying to think outside the box. The last process we had, we got seven applications. I'm certainly convinced that it's not always quantity, it's quality, but we want more applications in front of us. We want that opportunity to see more diversity, we want to have that competitive edge. Some departments are already doing this, but I think our comparables quite aren't yet. Governor Evers was coming out with some grant funding, we're going to try to sneak this in before that happens, to get that edge. If we do have to send someone through to the next police academy, that will begin in September. So we, I'm asking for permission to have like this sign-on bonus range, and just depending on the position it best puts us in as the village, the more we're willing to pay. So if this is a person who is certified, already a police officer, and is in good standing, and we want to make sure we lock that person down, we may pay the full three thousand. I will say, it's, it's not just about getting abs, it's about the process. We easily lose people in processes because they're getting picked up so quickly. We've expedited our process quite a bit, but still, it's just a very competitive process.
Okay. Alright, we got a motion in a second, anybody have any questions? Yeah, Derek?
So if we do approve this for the fifteen hundred or three thousand dollars, how does that then get ultimately spent? I mean, I'm assuming they have to sign on for a certain amount of time, certain period of time, before we give them the fifteen hundred or three thousand dollars?
It would be when they get hired, yeah. But keep in mind now, if the three-year and the five-year commitment agreement still applies as well, though. So there's, there's that going on, but we're really trying to get that interest in front of us first.
Sure, but does that ultimately end up within that three-year, five-year agreement that they have to repay if they don't stick around then?
No, that's, so the agreement doesn't talk anything about the sign-on bonus, this is a completely different thing. And it'll be very interesting to see if it works, if it does bring us some interesting talent, or diversity.
This is our first time doing it, right?
Yeah, yep.
And, I just, I would say, too, by the time somebody gets to the point where you're hiring them, they've been thoroughly vetted, and you're confident that they're going to stick around for a while, at least.
Yeah, so they're, not only are they interviewed by two different panels, they go through a back, full background investigation, a medical, a psychological, and we're talking, when I'm talking about background, it's everything. Employers, academy, friends, references, neighbors, you name it, we look at it. So, yeah, when, once we're ready to fully commit to that person, that's when we would pay that money.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Alright, so we got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, we're on to O, request, oh, that damn senior center. Request to purchase new commercial freezer from Kesnick's, I think we need a new one, huh? Oregon area senior center, an amount of four thousand one hundred and seventy-five, to be fifty percent cost shared with Dane County area agi, agency on aging. That's nice of them. Rachel?
Yeah, I think our current commercial freezer probably could have become their ice maker.
Yeah.
Because it's no longer defrosting properly, it's lost lots of ice in the back of our freezer. So it's, it's on its last legs. The repairman told us, you know, given what the supply chain is like, and how hard it can be to get your hands on these, I wouldn't wait till it dies, because you could be without one sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're just asking that that be approved, in spite of the fact that we'd really rather not.
Okay. Can we get a motion in a second? Derek, I see, and Amanda, any other questions or discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. P, request for two-week leave of absence without pay for senior center case managers. Noriko Stevenson wants to go visit Japan, right, Rachel?
Yep, she wants to go home.
Okay, so she's taking two weeks unpaid?
Right, she has two weeks of paid vacation, and then she would like to take an additional two weeks of unpaid leave.
Okay. Can we get a motion in a second? Mike and then Derek, any questions on that one? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We, we did Q already, eight reports of committees, none, nine unfinished, we did all that. We're down to ten, new business, items offered discussion, possible action. Ten A is creation of, creation of a restricted duty policy that we had. Chief, you want to say anything on this? It's yours. You don't have to.
Yeah, it's just, so I, I spoke briefly with Martin about light duty for our department. We've had a few officers go out on light duty here and there, and it's just, it's been a little unknown as to the guidelines, the rules, and then also, you know, like a standardized form for, for employees to fill out. So Martin and, Martin did some great work looking at templates that other communities are using, and then he asked for my feedback, which I really appreciated, and we, this is the product we came back with. I, I think what it does is alleviates any frustration on an employee's part, that they're just well-informed of what, what the policy is now.
And it's been reviewed by the labor law attorney as well.
Yeah, attorney Kyle Gugliellos, officer.
Alright, can we get a, a motion in a second? We'll get it on the table. Alright, Jerry, we'll give it to you, and we'll give it to Derek. Questions? Mike?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what, what part V A, the last paragraph of that means, but, but if I read this correctly, if people are injured on the job, they continue to receive, receive the regular rate of pay, if they can work restricted duty, they should do so. Anytime lost will be paid under the Workman's, Worker's Compensation Act or contractual agreements in the event of the police department. The part I don't understand is the last sentence. If an employee is unable to perform their essential job duties, only eligible for part-time restricted duty and FMLA-eligible, the employee will be placed on reduced schedule FMLA for that period of time the employee is unable to work. Now FMLA is not a paid program, so what I take that to read is that we're going to pay them for their, their time for whatever part-time work they can do, and the rest of the time, they're not going to be paid at all, even, even if, I mean, they were injured on the job, it's, I, I'm hoping I misread that, because that doesn't seem right. We should at least, if, if they can't get workman's comp, we should at least be giving them some sort of income to make sure that in addition to losing their health, they don't lose financial status. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Jeff, you want to say something?
Well, I've been doing, I've been looking, reading up a lot on this kind of stuff lately. I think what that means, Candy, maybe correct me if I'm wrong here, but.
I'm just reading it, just to.
Yeah, I mean, under FMLA, you know, we allow our employees who are out on FMLA to utilize the leave that they have available, okay? And they also are all under a different, what's the, what's the disability?
Income continuation.
Income continuation, which either kicks in at thirty, sixty, or ninety days, I believe.
Or one-twenty.
Most employees have enough time to carry them to that point and, and continue that. I think that's probably what that's talking about there.
That's what I would guess as well, but.
I mean, we don't, we tend not to leave people behind, right? In fact, we have a very generous policy of, I just speak of, of staff that I know have been out for, you know, torn rotator cuffs and stuff like that for very long time periods, and as long as they've been good stewards with the time off and banking what they have, they, they're usually well taken care of.
Yeah, and that's, I, I thought that was the case, I just wanted to be sure, because.
And then I think that also says it allows them to take it intermittently as well.
Right.
So.
So do we need to make that a little clearer, or?
I, I think it's okay.
I think, I mean, obviously, my view of this is this is put together by much, much smarter people who are labor attorneys, and I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna question.
Kyle did it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we can always ask, I mean.
Yeah, Mike, what do you want to?
If that's the explanation, I'll go with it.
Okay.
I don't want to hold this up, I just want to be sure we're covering our staff and workers.
Okay. Amanda?
And like I pointed out for another item, you know, we can go in and amend this, right? So like, if we pass it tonight, then we can have someone take a second look, and if we need to fix it, we fix it.
Yeah, I'll talk to Martin about it. I think it's, I think it word, is worded okay. I did read it a couple times, too.
Okay. Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, we did, ten B was our big one, we did that one. Ten C, future agenda items. Gives you, uh.
Okay, back up.
Oh, oh, we did do it, I think we did, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, who, do you, you guys remember?
I don't, I don't remember, I'm sure we did.
I think it was Amanda and Carleen.
Yeah, I think that might be right, Amanda and Carleen.
Okay, good enough.
I'll do it.
I'll do it, it's fine.
If not, we're gonna give it to them.
Alright, so we're on to future agenda items. Any board members have, have any place, items and new business on future agendas? Anybody have anything tonight? Alright, good. And then we'll, we'll go to eleven, it's the best part of the night, right? Alright, Mike and Jerry, alright. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
No, I was.
Well, thanks.
Jeff, it was June fifteenth of twenty fifteen, twenty-three thousand dollars for the.